I call to order the city council meeting of September 7th, 2016. The first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Tonight that will be led by Al Richards from the West Jordan Chamber.
To start.
Seth.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Item 3A, there's a presentation to recognize the World Mission Society Church of God who helped spread mulch at the Haven Pond in West Jordan. Members of the World Mission Society Church of God, along with local residents, volunteered and mulched along the pond and cleaned up the entire area. A total of sixty-five volunteers joined, working from ten AM to noon, and provided the city one hundred and thirty hours of volunteer labor. The church also provided lunch, drinks, and dessert from twelve-thirty to two PM for all who participated in the event and their families. The church collaborated with West Jordan City, the mayor's office, for the project. The city provided forty yards of mulch, wheelbarrows, rags, shovels, and water. We hope this inspires more volunteer enthusiasm in areas that are needed. The city of West Jordan wants to express their appreciation for efforts made by the volunteers of the World Mission Society Church of God. We do have a short video that I was shown, and I thought that it would be perfect to be shown here in the council meeting about that day.
We are so grateful to all the people to do this work out. We appreciate the effort and the dedication.
We love you. 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 We love you.
We would now like to invite those members from the World Mission Society Church of God to come up and the council, and we'll award you a plaque of appreciation for the service you did to our community. Please come. We look forward to other opportunities that you could help us serve. You're a great group of young people, and I know it's a worldwide organization, and we really appreciate it. Who would like to receive the plaque for your... Please.
In the last six months, the city attorney's office has now conducted six jury trials in front of Judge Coons. We do have four convictions. It's my understanding prior to that last six months, the city attorney's office did not do a jury trial in two years. I just want to let you know we're doing what we can to support law enforcement and make sure the community knows this city takes crime seriously, and we'll take those cases to trial when we need to. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dave Booker?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Ryan?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a reminder to you folks when you're conducting or hosting our demolition derby this Saturday, starts at seven, so pass the word on. Thank you.
Bill?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Rena?
Yes, we just wanted to let you know that the Sala County Council of Governments recently awarded the city eighty thousand six hundred dollars for a piece of property that we requested under the local court preservation fund. We'd asked for three different properties. Most of the funds went to another city, but they've encouraged us to come back with the other two, and that will basically complete most of the properties for Seventy-Eight South, and then we'll move on to other roadways. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief McCauley?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
Chief Diamond?
Nothing tonight. Glad to be back.
Councilmember Rice?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacob? Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say welcome back, chief. That's all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I am looking forward to the demolition derby. I think it will be a smashing event.
And councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
We'll move now to citizens' comment. I have one signed up to speak this evening. Alexandra E. Pramal.
Mayor and council, may we please pause and meditate. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting. We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governance, whether from within or through strength provided by our personal faiths. We seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected, and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. I'm still waiting for the council member, April twenty-ninth, 2015, to apologize. The behavior, in my opinion, was unbelievable, unacceptable. Throwing a pin, calling names, not waiting to be called, calling people names in interruption. Interesting enough, the same council person that I'm referring to, that council person was quoted in the Tribune. This is what the council member said, quote, "We must make a firm affirmation that as citizens we will not permit, or condone, or tolerate, or turn a black eye to corrupt, threatening, or unlawful behavior from our public officials." Hello, folks. If you want to... Let me repeat that. Unlawful behavior.
Mayor, if I could interrupt for a moment?
Please.
I'm looking at the citizen comment requirements set forth. It says we will not engage in verbal attacks against others or be disrespectful during this citizen comment. I don't think this is appropriate.
Excuse me, I'm not being disrespectful. I am stating the facts, sir. I'm just saying, the quote is, "Do." Do as I say.
Point of order. I believe that this is nothing short of harassment that needs to stop now so we can move on with the meeting.
I'm waiting for an apology.
She can make that request and then move on. She's made her request. I don't think the attack is appropriate, Your Honor.
Do you have anything else?
I want to know if it's appropriate or not. I'm allowed, as a citizen of West Jordan, to talk about anything I am. I'm not naming names. I'm not naming any names. I'm not allowed to do that. However, the behavior was... Did happen. The truth is the truth. This is what was quoted in the Tribune. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments? Now would be the time. Please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ira Matthews, forty-nine eight seven west, sixty-five fifteen south. I was talking to Mr. Burton there, Councilman Burton. I live out in District Number Three, I think, of the council, Jacobs Council. And I just noticed that online recently, and I noticed you had a committee that wasn't quite full yet, parks and open space, and I was just going to come here today and request, you know, I'm a longtime resident of West Jordan, if I request I could be on this committee. I think I could be a valuable asset.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. The process to get on a city... To request being appointed to a city committee is relatively straightforward. There's a form that you fill out and send in, and then the council will get in touch with you. But for the time being, Brian Clegg is the member of staff that oversees that committee, and I believe we actually have a meeting scheduled for... Is it tomorrow?
It's tomorrow.
Okay. But if you leave your contact information with Mr. Clegg as well, he can make sure that you're included on any communication until the point in time where we're able to have you formally appointed. But regardless of appointment, anybody is welcome to attend and participate with those different committees.
Great. Yeah, she filled the in with a card for the other person there. Thank you, Mr. McConaughey. Appreciate it.
We encourage you to apply. Anyone else? I'll close citizens' comments and move to the consent calendar. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. If nobody has anything to pull, I'm ready for a motion.
That would be in order?
I move to approve the consent calendar with the minor change to the minutes, which should show that the councilmember McConaughey arrived at eight oh six PM. It shows... Yeah, currently it's not including that piece, so I make the motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Second.
Or excuse me, the consent calendar with that change to the minutes.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion? A vote?
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Vote passes, six to one favorite.
Business item seven A, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution sixteen dash one four three, approving the request for a refund to Mitch, the sunglasses guy of vendor fees paid for the Western Stampede celebration in the amount of one thousand dollars. Brian Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This was brought to my attention after the rodeo had ended. This vendor paid his vendor fee. Paid for two spaces, twelve hundred dollars. Set up the first night after realizing that his sales wasn't as profitable as he hoped. He decided to pull out. In turn, we're asking for direction on refunding the thousand dollars. We'll keep the two hundred for the first day and refund the thousand dollars. He made eighty dollars the first night, so we'll bring this to council for direction.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Did you say he was occupying two spaces?
Yeah, his trailer, his booth or trailer occupied two spaces.
So if he had not been there, what vendor would have occupied those locations?
I couldn't tell you.
That's all you can tell me?
I'm not sure because he had... He was on the spaces.
Okay. And what was it he was selling?
Sunglasses.
Sunglasses. And where was he located?
Um, Al, where was he located over there?
He was located just east of the Port Pies. Actually, no other vendors. Food vendors.
Port Pies.
Yeah.
Should we have him at the microphone if he speaks?
If he could actually step up to the podium so we can get those comments in the record statement?
Please, Al, would you come forward to the mic?
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I move that we suspend the rules to allow him to discuss the council this time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Please. You have to restate what you did so it's on the record.
State what now?
Restate what you already stated so it's on the record.
I'll state what Brian was saying. I'm the chair over the vendors for the West Jordan Stampede Rodeo for the 2016 Stampede Rodeo. When Mitch got ahold of me being interested in being a vendor at the rodeo, he says this is a new business. He's just trying different places to see what works for him and what doesn't. When he told me that he had a twenty-two-foot trailer, I told him that I'd have to charge him for two spots because those are two areas. I also got with the committee, and the committee agreed, yes, that we were charging for two spots. The best spot to put him was up against the bleachers there, which was the West Bleachers, but on the back end of the West Bleachers. There's no other food vendors that can go there at that time, you know, because of the regulations for food vendors being so close to the Port Pies. So throughout the whole rodeo, I always go up to my vendors. I check on them every half hour, every hour, check, see how they're doing, how sales. I think after probably about the first hour or so, I went up to Mitch and he hadn't even sold one pair of sunglasses. My wife actually felt bad, and she went up there and purchased a pair of sunglasses from me. By the end of the night, when I got with him after the rodeo, he said it was like seventy or eighty dollars, I believe is what it was that he sold. He said, "You know, Al, this just is not a good fit for us. We're trying it, it's just not going to work." So I've not once had a vendor ever pull out of the rodeo. So I just assumed it was a matter of going to the committee, sitting down with the committee and saying, "Hey, can we refund this guy a thousand bucks?" I actually talked with Mitch, and I said, "Look, I got to charge you at least two hundred bucks for the first night. Is that fair?" And he goes, "Well, it's a little bit of a loss, but yeah, that's fair." So I'm the one that actually told him, "Hey, we'll refund you the thousand dollars," not knowing that we had to go through this big, huge process. I actually also looked at the application tonight, which I was going to bring with me, and I left it sitting on my desk. It doesn't state anywhere on that application that if anybody pulls out of the rodeo that they don't get refunded for the nights that they are not there. There is an area where it says that we'll give a twenty percent of the down payment is not refundable, but other than that, it doesn't say anything else. So I got with Ashley. I was working with Ashley O'Connor. I was working with Brian, doing everything I could. I talked with Mark, the city manager, to see if we can refund this guy something. I just don't believe it's fair that we keep his money. I did do my best to talk him into staying at least one more night to give it a shot because the first night's usually slower than the second night, but again, he just didn't feel comfortable and didn't feel right about it. So, you know, it'd be just like any of us going to a mattress store and purchasing some mattress, take it home, lay down on it, and realize it wasn't the right mattress for us. If we went back to the store, of course, there you can exchange mattresses. This we can't, but we would expect something. So I would appreciate if you guys would consider something, please.
First, I'd just like to say thanks to Al for sticking up for me. I've done other businesses before, and I get it. I entered, you know, a contract for the money. However, based upon the events that I've done since signing up, twelve hundred dollars is quite high compared to, you know, comparable events in South Jordan and Taylorsville. For instance, Taylorsville, it was two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and I had twenty-five thousand people at the event, and we did quite well there. And so I think just me going into it, I said, "Well, twelve hundred dollars, that's a lot. If West Jordan's a big city, they're probably going to put on a big production." I have not been to the festivities at West Jordan for probably twenty years, so I'm not super familiar going in, but nevertheless, based upon the price, you have certain expectations of A, number of people that are going to be available as customers, and then B, to a certain or lesser extent, you know, are those customers going to be kind of conducive to what you have to offer? And in that environment, we found that people were... Had spent money to get tickets to get in. It's kind of like being in the movies. You go get your seat. You might go back and get a refreshment. That's why the food vendors do pretty well, but you really don't have any interest in taking the time to browse and meander and look at, you know, impulse buy, like the sunglasses. So I agree that I have some learning to do, but I just felt like twelve hundred dollars is an expensive lesson, and any consideration you could give me would be appreciated. Thank you.
I have another question. Councilmember Jacob?
Yes, for Al, actually.
Yes.
Hi, Al.
Hi.
Do we have any other non-food vendors, or was this the only non-food vendor?
He was the only non-food vendor. Throughout the years that I've done this, I think this was my fourth or fifth year, we've had somebody else that actually came in and did T-shirts and purses, like western type wear. She actually... She put down her down payment, but she actually pulled out and didn't even pay the remainder of the stuff. Actually, the check when she... When I called her and asked for the payment, because she just left. She didn't talk with us or anything like that, but she sent us a check, but I guess it bounced. So really, he was the first one since then that we've brought in that's not been a food vendor, because basically that's what the majority is. From what I understand, a few years back, they had a hard time even getting food vendors to the rodeo. Now I'm turning people down because we fill the spots usually by April or May. We fill those spots, so it was nice to have Mitch contact me for something different, but then again, it's just not a good fit for a rodeo.
Okay. Another question. You mentioned in the contract that the twenty percent down payment is non-refundable. When did we collect the other eighty percent usually? Is it usually before the event, or is it...
Yeah, usually, I believe the date on the application is something like April thirtieth or something. We have to have the rest of the payment, and I don't know, Mitch, you may be able to remember or not. I don't remember if he put a down payment or he just went ahead and paid full right off the bat. Okay, so he paid him full right off the bat.
Okay, and is there anywhere in the contract that it states that any is refundable up to or including a certain date? You know, in other words, you pull out by June first, you're seventy-five percent refundable? Anything like that in the contract?
No, the only thing that it states that, you know, if you back out after putting your deposit down, twenty percent of that is not refundable. So whether somebody puts down three hundred bucks, you know, two hundred dollars, it's not refundable, but it does not state any of that either.
So theoretically, then, in the contract, you could pull out at any time and expect a refund of up to eighty percent?
I assume so. I would say after this, we need to definitely make sure it goes into the vendor application so this doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I don't mean to point out all the deficiencies in the contract, but I'm kind of... You see where I'm going?
Yeah, I see where you're going.
So twenty percent, twelve hundred dollars is the total cost, right?
Yes, that's what it is.
So twenty percent's two hundred and forty dollars, so you're in the ballpark, on your two hundred. Otherwise, any of that money's paid to the city, correct? I would assume that's all I'm right here?
Yeah, everything. Everything.
Okay. Not to the chamber or somewhere else. That's what I want to verify. Okay. So the rodeo's three nights this year, as I recall?
Yes, it was three nights.
And you were there for...
Second and the fourth.
And he was there for one night?
Yes, he was there for the first.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Council? Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm seeing both sides of this one. I'm somewhat sympathetic and wanting to see if there's some sort of leniency because things didn't work out that well, but at the same time, I'm really worried about setting a precedent that those fees can become refundable.
hundred bucks, it's, you know, two hundred dollars, it's, it's not refundable, but it does not state any of that either.
So theoretically then, in the contract, you could pull out at any time and expect a refund of up to eighty percent?
I assume so. I, I would say after this, we need to definitely make sure it goes into the, the vendor application so this doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I don't mean to point out all the deficiencies in the contract, but I'm kinda, you see where I'm going.
Yeah, yeah, I see where you're going.
Um, so twenty, twenty percent, twelve hundred dollars is the total cost, right?
Yes, that's what.
So twenty percent's two hundred and forty dollars. So you're in the ballpark on your two hundred. Um, otherwise, and that money's paid to the city, correct? I would assume that's why I'm right here.
Yeah, everything, everything.
Not to the chamber or somewhere else. That's what I wanted to verify. Okay. So the rodeo's three nights this year, as I recall?
Yes, it was three nights.
And you were there for?
Second, the fourth.
And he was there for one night?
Yes, he was there for the first.
Okay. Okay. That's all the questions I have for now. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Council? Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm seeing both sides of this one. Uh, I'm somewhat sympathetic and wanting to see if there's some sort of leniency because things didn't work out that well, but at the same time, I'm really worried about setting a precedent that, um, those, tho- those fees can become refundable. Uh, I, I really don't wanna go down that road now. I don't want to give any sort of insinuation that, um, if sales aren't what a vendor expects them to be, there'll, there'll be some sort of reimbursement because we potentially could have had somebody else come back and, uh, and be in that place. One, one of the other thoughts that came to mind is perhaps going forward in the future, we look at, uh, working with the chamber to see if there's different kinds of, um, premiums that can be paid. There's the regular fee for the booth space, period, and then there's maybe a potentially partially refundable fee based on certain criteria laid out. Maybe we could look at something like that in the future. Uh, but I, I'm really nervous about setting a precedent by providing a refund when the city did not do anything wrong. In fact, we had more people there than we had in previous years over those three days. Um, that said, um, I think I would question the placement of the booth. You said it was right at the very back on the west side next to the restrooms. Uh, i- is that right, Al?
Yeah, that was the only place we could fit a twenty-two foot trailer. Because like I said, we already had our spots filled for all the food vendors. So.
So my thought would be perhaps that was a mistake and he should not have been allowed to locate there and should have been, uh, I, I don't know that that should have been made. So based on that thought that he shouldn't have been located at that point, I would be comfortable refunding for the two nights he wasn't there, which would be, uh, what, a third retained, that would be an eight hundred dollar refund, based on that logic. Not on sales, but based on improper placement. We probably shouldn't have had him there and I don't think we should do that going forward.
City attorney?
Based on those comments, I might suggest rather than refine, defining it as a refund, there has been evidence before you that could establish perhaps a mistake in agreeing to rent two spaces and then enter into a rescission of the contract, agreeing to refund the difference of that precision of two hundred or two hundred and forty, whatever the amount would be appropriate, based on the fact that the space was only used for one night. Then you're not giving a refund, you're agreeing to, and I'm sorry, I apologize for not recognizing or remembering your name, but there would be an agreement of sorts to pay for one night, not a refund.
I, I just have one question while we have our attorney. Um, a contract, the minute the, uh, event started, the contract is in force, no matter what. There's no rescission beyond that point. It is an effective contract at that date. If somebody just chooses to pull out, I'm just speaking for other, even food vendors, they're stuck with the contract. The contract is the contract then. If they should choose to pull out prior to that, then there would be verbiage that would allow the twenty percent. But the minute the event starts, whether they choose to stay or not, the contract is in effect.
I would agree with those statements.
Thank you. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm thinking that, you know, maybe Al didn't put him in the, the best spots, but he put him where a location could put it. Maybe selling sunglasses in a bed like this isn't the right place to do it. I mean, how many hours of sunlight did we have if it was dark? And how would you sell sunglasses in the dark? That might be tricky. And I think a good precedent's for us to set that, that we are flexible and that we understand and we're willing to work this out. And we want people to come in and try. Had this been a fantastic fit, you would have been welcome on board, be back here next year. And perhaps somebody else will instead now that they know that we're willing to be flexible and work with them. So I would be willing to go ahead and provide their refund, Burton.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my thoughts are similar to Councilmember McConaughey's. Actually, I was thinking he was there for one night, he wasn't there for two nights, therefore should have paid one-third of whatever, um, if the city has any culpability at all as far as a mistake being made. That said, I, I also am worried of setting a precedent that the city of West Jordan will guarantee that you have a good sales experience. With all sympathies, I can muster for not having one. You open a store and you enter into a six-month lease and you're only there for a week. Unless the lease has a cancellation provision, you're, you're on the hook for six months. It's, it's not quite the same as returning a mattress, with all due respect, Al. Uh, he's, he's not buying a product from us that turns out to be faulty or just doesn't fit and, you know. So, uh, in, in my, in my opinion, I, I, I would only be comfortable taking any action as far as offering any money back if we direct staff in some way to make sure that the contract has very definite provisions for this kind of thing going forward. And that is, you know, twenty percent down payment is non-refundable, period. Hundred percent is non-refundable as of July first or whatever it might be as, you know, set a date, whatever it might be. Let the park staff come up with that. And, uh, very, very much, parks and legal, I guess, can work together on it. Um, and, and very much make some changes so that this situation, you know, when you, when you have a bad night, it's, it's a bad night. I, I feel bad, but you know, I've entered into business before and not made any sales and you just kinda move on, you know? You try again at the next, next venue or next whatever. So, um, that said, I'd be in favor, uh, along with, uh, Councilman McConaughey of an eight hundred dollar refund for the two nights the spaces were not used.
I, I think personally, just, uh, not willing to make a motion because I've never had anybody in my business life guarantee me to make a profit, no matter what I did. Um, but I think with the explanation that was here, uh, charging, uh, one-third of the amount and giving a refund of two-thirds probably is in order because, only because the placement might not have been the best. May have been better to have placed it outside the ticket booth, uh, where everybody walked past it. I'm just guessing, but, uh, just because the placement was a trial for the city. So I'd be willing to refund all but a third. But I'd like to hear the council on deciding.
If, if I may, Mayor, one more comment. Being in business, I've had lots of advertisers come to me with creative advertising and if I act like I'm not quite sure I want to do that and go up their priceway down and then if it doesn't work, I haven't gotten refunds, but they quit charging me. Like they have a way to get out of it, whereas if it worked out well, they would charge me more and I would have kept it going. So there is some of that flexibility that goes in there too. And I would be willing to accept the eight hundred. So I would second that motion.
Motion, yeah.
Oh, can I make that motion? I'll second it.
Councilmember Jacob?
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to provide Mitch, the sunglasses guy, a refund of eight hundred dollars of his vendor fees with the stipulation that we direct staff to amend the contract so that, uh, future pulling out of, of, uh, however you wanna say this, future, uh, non-performance on, on the part of the vendor is, uh, explicitly addressed going forward at all city events, uh, obviously not the only one.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the word refund was used in the motion, but our attorney had preferred verbiage? Well, if you wanna use the, in this instance, the motion is a refund. My suggestion was a way to look at finding error in the initial formation of the contract, identify a mutual mistake so as to avoid the claim that it was in fact a refund. The mistake in this instance was in renting two spots when one would have been sufficient and perhaps maybe arguably the location is not appropriate for that product. And then enter into a rescission where both sides come together and reach an agreement to pay a certain amount for that night. That was my suggestion as opposed to a refund. But if you, uh, the motion, as I understand it, is the refund will be given, but we will correct the contract in the future.
So I think that, I think that's sufficient since we're gonna change, uh, the direction was that the contracts would be changed for the future. Um, I think that would be my opinion. If you would like to change the motion, Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask, uh, for further advice, if there were to be a substitute motion offered, how our attorney would recommend wording that?
I just think that it's past tense now and I don't know that it really matters. It's the council's decision whether to, uh, appropriate some of the money.
I, I'm okay with the motion as it stands. If, uh, somebody wants to offer a substitute, that's certainly within your, you can defer to it.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment or just for this motion to make sure we have it addressed. It was mentioned, uh, the Parks Department illegal to be involved in the decision of approving. I would like to, uh, kindly also ask that the committee be involved in that decision, specifically those who've been involved, the vendors, so that they can provide insight as to what kind of flexibility, if at all, is needed. If that, if that would be in the spirit of the motion, so staff could have that direction.
Absolutely, yeah. As a friendly amendment, I would accept.
You have a friendly amendment to the motion. Will you accept that on your second?
Yes.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote pass the six-digit paper.
Business item seven B, discussion and possible action regarding resolution sixteen dash one four four, approving an option for the closure of Seventy's South for reconstruction of Bangater Highway. Wendell?
Thank you, Mayor. As you are aware, the UDOT Department of Transportation, uh, is building three different interchanges along Bangater Highway, beginning in West Valley City and going through South Jordan City. Two of those overpasses, interchanges are located in the city of West Jordan, one at Seventy's South, the other at Ninety's South. Uh, UDOT has had several public, uh, meetings to discuss the options and some of the construction that's related to the, the one at Seventy's South. And the issue before you this evening is, um, is the Seventy's South gro- uh, interchange and the idea there is to pick an option that's most cost-effective, uh, reduces the cost, but also keeps the minimum, uh, impacts to the traveling public. Uh, Brian Atkinson from Morroks Engineers, uh, is here this evening to make that presentation. Uh, it's my understanding that the, the UDOT wishes the council to select one of the options, A, B, or C, this evening, so that they can, uh, put that into the bid documents and move forward. So I'll turn the time over to Brian.
Thank you, Wendell. Um, Mayor and councils, good to be here tonight. Um, just one quick item before we get started into the presentation, wanted to take just a quick second to update the mayor and the council. Um, as we continue working with your staff, uh, the project is moving forward. You may see some activity occurring out there along the corridor in the next few weeks. Just wanted to make you aware, as UDOT prepares for this upcoming construction, um, we've acquired right-of-way out there and you may see some homes that we have acquired start to be demoed, uh, in preparation for the project. And then next week up at Fifty-four South, um, we have some utility work. We have to relocate the Jordan Valley Aqueduct up there. So there's some construction activity that will occur here along the corridor. Um, but it's just in preparation for the work coming up next year. So, um, so for tonight, I'm here, um, on behalf of UDOT. We've been, uh, working with your city staff and coordinating with them. Um, and at the speci- as Wendell mentioned, at the Seventy's South interchange, um, we're here tonight to request your input on, on how we're gonna manage some of that traffic during the construction of that closure. Um, we are anticipating that once construction starts next spring, um, where construction's gonna start in the spring and will go until November, right before Thanksgiving of twenty seventeen. That in order to build the interchange, it's gonna have to be broken up into three phases of construction. Um, they're gonna move the traffic into the middle of the roadway out there today and build the outsides of the new, new Bangeter. And then once they get the outsides built, they're gonna move traffic to the outsides and build the inside where they'll build the bridge and the embankment necessary. Um, as part of that construction, um, as many of you remember, we are gonna be rebuilding the pedestrian crossing, uh, just north of the existing intersection, kinda highlighted here in yellow. And that will be part of the very first phase of construction. They, we've, we've told our contractors they have to build that first, uh, before they can take down the existing, uh, pedestrian bridge. So, um, in conjunction to our construction that'll be going on for the interchange, as you are aware, uh, the city is also doing some utility work for sewer line along Seventy's South that is being, occurring this summer and will also be occurring next, next year. So as we get into some of this, uh, construction, I'm gonna be highlighting a few things that will be in conjunction with that activity. And then also, the city is, um, asking to perform some sewer and water line upgrades that will be crossing underneath the new structure. So there's some city work and UDOT work going on at the same time here. So, um, so during phase one, we're anticipating that they're gonna build one side of that outside first. Um, we're showing it here on the east side. Uh, during this phase, all lanes of traffic and all movement that you have today will stay the same. It's gonna be scrunched in and feel a little tighter and you're gonna see construction activity going on next to those lanes. But as far as the traffic movement, um, during phase one, that's gonna stay the same as today. Phase two, similar. They're gonna move to the other side on the outside. Again, all lanes and movements that are out there today are gonna stay the same. They're gonna feel tighter. We're gonna scrunch them in closer together. You're gonna see barrels and construction occurring adjacent to that. But as far as the movement goes, uh, that will be very similar to what's today. And then there'll be some utility work here on this side for construction for the Jordan Valley Aqueduct. It's really in phase three, when the traffic gets moved back out to the outside, that we no longer have the room necessary to allow all the traffic to stay in this existing configuration that you see today. So at phase three, this is gonna be sometime in the late summer, early fall of next year, is when you're gonna see that we're gonna have to start restricting some traffic movements. And we've come up with three options, like as Wendell mentioned, that we're, like your feedback and, and input and, uh, on tonight. So option A is we close Seventy's South. Um, we would still allow rights to go off of Bangeter and to come on to Bangeter, but all other movements coming to that Bangeter intersection would be closed. Bangeter traffic, northbound, southbound would still continue and those rights would be allowed, but all Seventy's South, uh, movements except for that right on to Bangeter would be closed. And I'll get into a lot more detail on each one of these as we go through. Um, option B would be that only the left turns for each movement would be closed. So northbound, southbound, left turns off of Bangeter would be closed. And then westbound, eastbound, left turns coming off Seventy would be closed. But through lanes and right turn lanes would be open during this phase. And then option C, um, on Bangeter, the left turns for northbound, southbound would be closed, but the through lanes would be open. Um, on Seventy's South, all movements would be open, but there'd be less lanes. So you'd be able to turn left, go through or turn right. But today, there's two lanes going left, two lanes going through. Those will be restricted down to one lane. So we'll get into some of those details here. Um, this is just a little schematic. Kinda the most important thing is up here in the upper right-hand corner. It kinda shows in black what the existing lane configuration is out there today. And then those red, um, circles with the slashes through them show which movements would be eliminated. So again, in option A, this is the full closure of Seventy. Um, the rights coming on to and off of Bangeter would be open. The through lanes would be going on Bangeter, but all of the other movements on Seventy's South would be closed. Uh, because of those movement restrictions for this option, there would be some detours that would have to be signed and put out there to direct people away from that intersection. Um, so there would be some out of direction travel that would occur during that closure, um, with varying, varying, uh, time durations, with the longest being seven extra minutes. to get around because of the closures. We've also noted that there would be some additional response time for some emergency response personnel and vehicles for anything over here on the west side of Bangater. We've measured that time to be about an additional three minutes during this closure. Just real quick in summary, for option A, for the full closure, we're asking for up to sixty days of closure. We anticipate that by doing that for sixty days, we're going to speed up construction for approximately three to six weeks. So it's going to get done about three to six weeks earlier. We're telling our contractor they have to be done before Thanksgiving in November. So by allowing the closure, we're anticipating it would be done sometime in October rather than in November, possibly early to mid-October for that. Right turns would be allowed off of Bangater, as we mentioned. We feel like this helps UDOT with safety for the workers, provides them the most efficient, optimized work. It also provides for the city, for their water line and sewer work that's going to occur there, some efficiencies in cost and safety for that project as well. In addition, our closure would coincide with the city's closure that's already planned for their east along Seventy for their utility work there as well. You know, the major con that we have on this option is just the additional travel time to go around the closure. Option B is where we're only closing the left turns at each leg of the intersection. So all the rest of the movements would be open. Through lanes on Bangater rights, through lanes on Seventy and rights would be open, but it would just be the left turns. Again, there would be some detouring because those left turn movements are closed. However, there's less detours that would be needed here, with the longest estimated out of direction travel being about four minutes for this option. One thing to note is that you are going to see with this option, there is going to be congestion at that intersection. We're taking away some movements there. So the intersection is going to be more congested during construction than it is today. So you're going to see and feel some of that congestion as you try and travel through there if this option were selected. One other thing to note, if this option were selected, is that there would still need to be a full closure. However, it would only be in the fourteen day range for the city's betterment work on the sewer and water line at the intersection. We anticipate, we need the space required to get the pits in order to get those utility lines in. So with this option, construction is going to go right to the bitter end. It's going to go right till that Thanksgiving, right before Thanksgiving in November. And the schedule's going to be tight. We anticipate it's going to require some twenty-four-seven construction there towards the end in order to get it completed in that timeframe. Okay, option C. So again, this is closing left turns on Bangater. Through lanes are open on the side street on Seventy. The through lanes are open, the left turns are open, and you could make a right, but it would be in the through lane. It wouldn't have its own lane there. So this option, we're allowing more access here, but it comes at a price. You're going to see really heavy congestion during construction during this phase because of the lane restrictions there. And we're estimating that to get through the intersection is going to be about five minutes during the peak hours, in the morning and in the afternoon. Again, there's going to be some minor detours needed because those left turns off Bangater are not allowed. But in this option, those are pretty minimal, with some out of direction time in about the four minutes again. So pros and cons with this option. This option provides the most access in and out of the area. However, it comes at a price with that heavy congestion. We would consider this intersection failing if the construction wasn't going on because of how much delay it's going to be involved in getting through there. Again, there would still need to be a limited closure for that ten to fourteen days for the city's utility work. And this construction, we anticipate, go on right till the very end, which would require some twenty-four-seven construction at the end to get it to work out. So, real quick in summary, we've got those three options. Option A is a full closure. We think it can get done quicker, with some benefits to both UDOT and the city in terms of safety and efficiency and optimization. But it does come with some out of direction travel, with the longest being seven minutes. Option B and C, we anticipate taking the full time to get completed. It'd still get done in November, but take the full time. Less out of direction travel, but you're going to start seeing more congestion with each option during that construction phase. Any questions I can help answer? That was a lot of information.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It's very good. My question is, on any of the options besides option A, left turns are not allowed off of Bang-- well, they're not allowed on any of them, right?
Correct.
But on option B and C, there's through traffic on Seventy South.
Correct.
Oh, no. On option B, there's only right turns. But, right, never mind. Okay, I'm with you. Option C, there's through traffic.
So even on option B, there's still through traffic?
Oh, there is. You're right.
Yes.
I'm just concerned with either of those two options of left turns still occurring. It seems to me that even when you close left turns, somebody sits there in that lane that's not supposed to be turning left and clogs up traffic for hundreds of yards and sits there with their blinker on, even though there's a big no-left-turn sign right next to it.
Right.
And it happens anyway. Under any of these options, is that not feasible? In other words, would it not be possible for them to, for somebody to turn left under any of these options?
So there's no way we could really prevent that from happening other than signing an enforcement?
Right, okay. I was just wondering if there's, if any of these options involve like a, you know, a trench down the middle of Bangater or something that made it physically impossible to...
Let me, let me back up. With option A, when we close that road, that, there would be some physical barriers there because they wouldn't have access to the full facility. That would restrict them from making that movement, so...
That's, that's my first concern. My second, my second concern is that usually when no-left turns are allowed, it goes straight and flip a Uwe, left turns. At least, that's how I do it.
So you're the problem.
I know, right? Guilty as per. Legally flipping a Uwe, by the way, chief.
There you go.
I've already actually been in touch with a neighbor here on Seventy South, just east of this intersection, three or four houses, who has contacted me about people turning Uwe's in front of her house anyway, or behind her house, I guess, technically. Just, so those are the two major concerns I have. I'm not leaning towards one of these specifically in particular, but those are the two unintended consequences that I see happening of those scenarios right off the top of my head. Thanks.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. On option A, on your slide, it said emergency vehicles would be increased by three minutes for their response time. I think you mentioned when you were talking, it'd be seven minutes longer for traffic to get through there. So the traffic's taking seven minutes, but emergency vehicles take seven minutes?
It depends which movement you're trying to go to. Really, that, the one that's going to take the most time is, if you want to come out of the west side here and go north or south on Bangater, that's not going to be allowed to go north because there's no left. There'll be a right to go south. But if you want to go north, you're going to have to go out and around up to sixty-two to get there, and that's where it's going to take the seven minutes. From your firehouse station, their out of direction is just coming off Seventy-Eighth, coming over to the Jordan Landing Boulevard, and then getting in there. So their time is shorter. Each one of those arrows has its own out of direction time, and it varies with seven minutes being the longest for this orange option here.
Okay. The next question I have, option A saves you the most time, which I suppose saves you the most money as well. So if we were to choose option A and provide this financial savings to you, could we interpret that money to mean that we'd get a higher betterment for West Jordan that we could use for other investments around the construction area?
Sure. So option A, your betterment costs would be, in our opinion, better because they can build it faster and more efficiently. So you're not going to have to spend as much money, yes.
Right. Buys them up for some dollars. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Option A, where it talks about the sixty days, the total of sixty days of closure at the contractor's discretion. I assume, although it's at their discretion, they still have to give a certain amount of notice in order to make any necessary adjustments. It's not just, we're closing it tomorrow.
Correct, correct. And we, I should have mentioned, we anticipate for the utility work, for your water line, sewer line, they're going to want to do that first. For the interchange work, they're going to do that second. And they probably won't be consecutive, but they'll be big blocks of time. They'll close it for the utility work with plenty of advance notice, and we'll get that information out to everybody, and then similar for the interchange.
Thank you. No further questions, Mayor, though. When we're ready for conversation with council, I do have a few comments there.
Now, I have a couple of questions before we... So is the sixty days firm? Has the contract been let yet?
It has not been let. So we're in the middle of proposals. The contractor's preparing proposals as we speak. But they won't be turned in until December, so...
I just, I know that, at least for me, option A is a much better issue, though the seven of us up here on the dais will take the heat, not UDOT for that. But you have to do two weeks on any option.
Correct. There's going to be closures on any option, and that ten to fourteen days is a minimum, yes.
And, and did you answer my question? I don't know. Sixty days would be firm? When you go out for bids, you will make that a firm with a stiff penalty, that that's the maximum timeframe it would be closed?
That's correct.
And one other question. Option A doesn't require disturbance to the residents of twenty-four-seven like the other two options? It can be done during the daylight hours?
Yeah, I think there's still going to be some night work, but we don't think the schedule is so aggressive there that they'll be doing as much night work there with option A. There's still going to be some night work, though. All of them will have some night work, so just more with the other two.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jacob?
One more question. I just thought, thanks again for everything. When Seventy Eight Hundred South was redone this way, I don't recall it ever being closed underneath, or Seventy Eight South, in any direction, was it? And if not, what's different?
Yeah, no, Seventy Eight South wasn't closed. You may remember the three turns, the left turns were eliminated and those three turns were put in. There were some limited closures for some of the bridge work that went on, but there was not any long-term closures. The difference here is the amount of traffic between what's on Seventy South and what's on Seventy Eight South. Seventy Eight South has a lot more traffic on it than Seventy South does, so...
Are the through, through turn left turns an option for Bangater? And that would eliminate my whole, you know, issue.
We work in a restrictor contractor from, he can eliminate those left turns. Whether he puts those three turns in is part of his proposal. We're going to score them accordingly based on how they put their proposal together, but it's not a requirement that they have to put them in. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
You bet.
Appreciate it. Hopefully, we won't have any more questions for you.
Let me know if you do.
Thanks. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Short, short comments would be, I prefer option A. The little bit longer comments would be, going back to, going back in memory to the experience with Seventy Eight Hundred South when that was closed down. I don't have exact numbers in front of me, but there was a thirty-day period where we had thirty-some-on accidents. We're looking at more than one a day. I remember one that was fairly severe with a vehicle versus a concrete mixer. I think the best option would be option A. I think that's going to be safest, just because it limits what people can do. Also, limits the amount of time that we're under construction. You noted, Mayor, the extended twenty-four-seven work for some of the residents over there. I would just prefer to bite the bullet. And even if we are the ones that take the heat, I'm fine taking the heat if we can say, this is going to get done quicker and get you back to normal life, especially if we have a better chance to do it before the snow starts to fall, because once we pass October, I really don't want to risk it. I think we're going to have higher propensity for accidents, and if we extend that further, the sooner we're done, the better. So I'm all behind option A. Thank you, Mayor.
I second this motion.
Is that a motion?
That was a comment.
Councilmember?
It's just twice tonight.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. Mine's kind of a question generically for staff and maybe even council. I have not received any feedback from the public at large. Have we had feedback from residents? How about ForeSquare or even the tenants? Do they have a preference? Have we heard anything?
Dave, would you like to come to the mic?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Dave Murphy. We, I have spoken with ForeSquare Properties actually today, and they prefer the shorter time period here in getting things back open, obviously, before business hits real heavy in November. So a shorter schedule for them is definitely a plus for them. I have not had feedback from residents personally, so I can't comment on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thanks. I move that we move forward with option A.
Second.
I'll ask out a little comment. UDOT, I'd love to see twenty percent of the betterment come back our way so that we can do our own little improvements right there in that area.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion of the motion? Councilmember Jacob?
Just a comment, Mayor. I'd be a lot more comfortable waiting than having a public hearing. Well, yes, I would be more comfortable. I know you guys had a lot of open houses on this, where citizens have been able to come in and voice their opinions. However, I haven't been to all of them. I haven't heard them. I would just be more comfortable if they had a chance for somebody to sound off. That's all, thanks.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. The only additional comment I want to make is a thank you to staff and Horox and UDOT for making efforts to come out here. I don't remember the same level of engagement happening when we went through everything with Seventy Eight Hundred South. I feel like we have a lot better visibility, and as a city, we've had more opportunity to let our opinions be known. We've had a couple of open houses already to discuss some of the pending changes and been able to take some of the feedback from that. And I just really wanted to express appreciation for what, to me, feels like going above and beyond to make sure that we're aware and we're prepared for what's coming as you improve the transportation throughout our city. So, thank you.
That's all.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes. Fudge board in favor.
Mayor? Please.
I'd just like to say on the record that no vote's not against the closure, it's just against not having the public input prior. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Thanks.
Item seven, C, discussion and possible action on a secondary water feasibility study.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
Since I've been here and talking about a, a secondary water system, we've been looking at it and then not looking at it, and this has gone back years, and a lot of projects that we do kind of force us to come up with a, with a, a process of changing projects to accommodate a secondary water system or not accommodating, such as putting sleeves under roads and things like that. And so we really need to make a decision if we're going to go ahead with this or not. So we put together a, a physical feasibility study, and that's what we have for tonight, so we can at least say, are we going to do it? Are we not going to do it? Is it cost-effective or is it not?
Thank you. Wendell?
I don't know that I could add too much to that, except that we have Matt Millis from Zions Public Finance here this evening. He's going to make a presentation. There's several items that he would like comments from the council on before he finalizes his report. We'll bring him back to you. So, Matt.
Thanks.
May I distribute these quickly? Very quickly?
I assume they're not over fifty dollars in value?
Well, Mayor and members of the council, it's my pleasure to be here this evening to talk briefly about the secondary water feasibility analysis that, that I have done. My name is Matt Millis. I work with Jonathan Ward at Zions Bank Public Finance. I've been doing this type of work for about sixteen years now, looking at different financial scenarios for utilities, whether they be water, sewer, storm, roads, what have you. And so it's been a pleasure to work with Wendell and Justin on looking at the long-term feasibility of, of your analysis on secondary water. So our analysis is extremely in-depth. It's a very, very complicated study, but we've tried to boil it down to the most key points in this analysis and in this presentation for tonight. And so what we're going to talk about is a macro approach, which is an overall citywide department-type cost, and then a micro approach, which is really going to look at the impact on residents. However, what we might find is, based upon how you perceive the macro approach, you may be more interested in the micro approach or less interested in the micro approach. And so we're prepared to talk as much or as little on those later macro or micro home-by-home items. So the thing with the secondary water system is, a city can look at the sources of water, which in this case, on one side is the price of culinary water from Jordan Valley, and compare that with the price of water from sources such as South Valley Water Reclamation or reused water, or Welby Canal water that could be used for secondary purposes. And a person could get quite excited about the price differential between Jordan Valley versus some of the other lower, possibly lower quality, lower quality and much less expensive sources of water. The challenge that we've found and we want to talk about today is that in addition to having a lower source of wa, cost source of water for secondary, however, you have to still build the infrastructure, issue debt, and adjust your rates to be able to, in the short term, build the structure, the facilities that will ultimately deliver that lower-cost water. And I think, as we talk a little bit today, you'll see the implications and the, and the challenges that come with bonding for the amount of infrastructure that is needed. However, what I might characterize as a challenge for the short term could be a great opportunity for the long term. And so what we've prepared tonight is a draft of our findings, primarily from the water department level, the macro level, that we wanted to present to the council for your opinions and your thoughts on the, the long-term or short-term viability of this system. So in the end, I think what we will proceed with, in terms of looking at a final resident-by-resident rate structure, will depend upon how you perceive the, the big picture. So very quickly, sorry. Very quickly, and just a quick summary, I've already described a lot of what we've done. We've looked at three primary water scenarios, compared those scenarios against the cost of just purchasing all your water from Jordan Valley. We looked at things such as operation and maintenance, projects, bonding, and so forth, and then have ultimately come up with, what's the overall cost to the city in terms of the overall department cost as well as an individual per acre-foot basis? Now acre-foot is the terminology that we use for a relatively large volume of water, about three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand gallons, which could be approximately about what one home would use in the course of a year. It gives us a really good indicator of what the relative price differences might be by scenario. So the three scenarios that we've talked about are, first of all, a scenario one, which is the expanded secondary water system that will serve your purple pipe areas plus areas west of Fifty-Six West, and it results in about seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars, or I'm sorry, acre-feet of savings from Jordan Valley. So you would have seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine acre-feet that would be saved, but then acquired through reused water and Welby Canal. So this is on our third sheet of the PowerPoint presentation, so this, sometimes even I get a little, a little confused on my scenarios. But scenario one is the expanded system. Scenario two is the limited secondary water system that relates to your current purple pipes and savings of about one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty acre-feet of water from Jordan Valley. And then we have our scenario three, which is the culinary-only scenario where we purchase, continue to purchase everything from Jordan Valley. Any questions on the scenarios so far? Okay? Here is a very detailed summary of each scenario by where you'll receive your water, where it's being delivered to, the O and M costs and culinary demands and capital projects. I don't think that I'll go through that in depth unless, unless there are any specific questions on the scenarios. So this is our macro comparison of our three alternatives. Now again, secondary one is the expanded secondary system with about seventy-seven-hundred acre-feet. It's much larger, more capital projects, more O and M, and more bonding that has to occur. However, you do have some savings on Jordan Valley water as well as culinary capital projects. So that's in the green. The second scenario, blue, is the limited scenario, and then the red, the baseline that we're comparing everything to in this analysis, is the culinary-only scenario three. So although we have good savings on the actual cost of water between purchasing from Jordan Valley anywhere between four-hundred to five-hundred dollars an acre-foot versus acquiring water from South Valley Water Reclamation at perhaps thirty dollars an acre-foot inflated, plus Welby Jacob Canal water at, at a comparable price, there is still the need to construct projects. And so what we've seen is, is we look at the scenarios as a whole, scenario one, the expanded scenario, starts to save the city sufficient money to cross over the culinary-only scenario in about 2035. So it's about nineteen years from now, with reasonable estimates that the alternative one will start to pay off bonds and start to save enough money through water purchases and O and M to be less costs, less of a cost than your culinary-only scenario. And as we look at scenario two, which is the more limited scenario, and when we say limited, it's not only, you, you are delivering a lesser amount of water, and true, you are having a lesser amount of capital projects for that small amount of water, but relatively speaking, you get more bang for your buck with scenario, with alternative one, when you're looking at the cost of capital projects relative to the amount of secondary water that you're delivering. And that'll deliver in 2038, so that's an additional twenty-two years. So wanted to see if there's any questions on this. I think this graph speaks for itself, and the decision then becomes, does this present a short-term financial viability issue, or does it present a long-term opportunity for saving the cost of water? Because what we see at the very end, where the red continues to climb while the blue and green continue to diverge, that will continue to, to, to separate, and there will be, there will be long-term culinary savings. However, you know, we're looking out at 2045 in this scenario, and we're also looking out to 2060 as we're looking at the water supplies. And so always, one of the challenges with looking at a financial model at the long term is what things could change in terms of technology, watering patterns, just a lot of different things that could be of concern. So I present this as the long-term overall cost of water to, to the city. Can I answer any questions on this slide at the moment?
Councilmember Burton, sir.
So your water sources would be, for the secondary, would be the Welby Canal and the Jordan Valley South Valley?
Yeah, south.
Thank you, there's a difference.
That's correct. And so let me clarify, on scenario one, which is delivering approximately seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty, you need two sources, the primary source is your South Valley Water Reclamation water, which is reused water applied on a secondary, and then the secondary source, to a much lesser degree, is going to be your Welby Canal water. Now on scenario two, you only have about sixteen-hundred acre-feet that you need in secondary water. All that water would come from the South Valley, South Valley Water Reclamation facility, nothing from the Welby Canal company.
So the cost is including pumping it on a continuous basis over this dam?
Yes, and so we've looked at, we have looked at the cost of, first of all, your cul, your culinary system, looking at operation and maintenance, capital projects, future long-term bonding, things such as that, all defined by your current city drinking water master plan. And then the Hanson Island Loups has also prepared your, your secondary water master plan that details the costs of capital and operation and maintenance for the secondary system. And so there, there's a great degree in difference between scenario one, which is much bigger than scenario two. And so they, they contemplate the exact differences on O and M between those two scenarios. So, and then we've spread that out with demand, we, we've done a, a pretty extensive job on making sure that we've included all costs that would be related to these systems.
Are you including a storage some for it on the west side of the city at higher?
Well, that's a very good question. If that storage tank was found in either the drinking water or the secondary water master plan, then those would be included in that analysis. I, however, being a financial analyst, did not look at that in terms of the exact tanks, but we had a very intensive, all-inclusive list from Hanson Island Loups.
Could be an open storage you use for other uses.
That is a question that is above my pay grade. I, I do not know that, so...
That's good, Brian, I think.
Okay, thank you. So this is the macro, overall, total scenario cost. So now I'll talk just for a little bit about the micro approach. And in the micro approach, what we've had to assume is that there are no subsidies from culinary water user rates to pay for the secondary water system. And so what you see is some, some high level of costs in the upfront on the green line, which is scenario one, because we are not using any cash from culinary water to subsidize those rates. So we have to build facilities, we have to have bonds, there is a little bit of O and M, but the problem is, is we have very low number of users, and so that bumps that green line up considerably. The blue line, and just one quick clarification that'll make some sense on this, is even though the green line has seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine some acre-feet of water, it's spread out over a forty or a sixty-year period of time, forty-year period of time. The blue scenario, which is your limited purple pipe, has almost the full number of connections immediately. And so there's not this period of time where the system grows into the cost through the number of connections. You've got the full cost, you've got the full connections, that's why the blue line is much less than the green. So if we provide no subsidies, essentially, the red line, again, our benchmark, is, is the lowest initially, with the blue line following, and then the highest being the green line, alternative one. So essentially, the, the, the alternative one has to grow into the number of customers to pay for those costs per acre-foot. You, you got to reach a critical mass in the number of connections. Any, any questions?
I have a question. The green line, does that take into account only those west of, I believe you put Fifty-Six-Hundred West paying for that water, or is it spread out throughout the entire city?
That is just strictly those that are, well, that is strictly those that are west of the Fifty-Six-Hundred West, yeah.
Councilmember Jacob.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. My mic's good, but it's not the good when it's off. Thank you, Mayor. So this is, the price per acre-foot is the cost of the city, is that correct? It's not the cost of the average homeowner necessarily? That's what the city will pay for water to all the various sources, depending on the scenario, is that correct?
Well, it is the, the price per acre-foot is what the city would typically pay, but it's a good indicator of what a home would pay, because a home would typically use, you know, roughly an acre-foot of water, give or take a little bit, based on the size of the lawn. But it's a, you know, rather than calculating base fee and punitive tiers, it's a good indicator of how rates might fall out for different alternatives.
Right, but if the city should change its, my, council, whatever, should make only those that have secondary water put the bill for secondary water, for example, if, then this would not necessarily recognize the impact of somebody who didn't have secondary water, it would, it would only, you know, so that would be a policy decision we would make on how to charge and recoup our costs for our water. This is just the city's cost for the water, not the homeowner's cost necessarily, depending on how we structure rates and this.
Well, that, that is a very good question. Because we were given the direction to not subsidize rates, this is essentially how you would look at your, your cost of, of water. So those that are within the city, that are not in the secondary area, would have a price relative to the, I guess it's a sense of magnitude of what we're looking at here. It's not the exact price that would be paid each month or each year, but what it does is gives you a sense of magnitude of how much more potentially a person that is within the alternative one service area would pay for their water relative to those that are culinary only, shown in red. So...
So, so you could, so we could assume then that somebody living on the older east section of the city, who's never going to have secondary water, likely, would continue, regardless of the scenario, would continue along the red line more or less? Whereas those west of the city, if they're in existing purple pipe area, would follow the purple line, and those in the newer areas that would put in secondary water would follow the green line? More or less?
More or less. And so, and, and just as a clarification, if you, if, if the city were to pursue alternative one, even if people who had existing purple pipe would still fall under that green line, because all secondary would pay for all secondary?
Right.
And, and only the blue line would follow the purple pipe, that'd be just purple pipe only, not the other expanded areas, so...
I think I follow you.
Okay, I hope, thank you. Sorry, sometimes these charts get complicated.
No problem.
So...
Mayor? Do you factor in on the district water increases, about four or five percent increase per year?
Yes, that's correct, and I have that in the slide in just a second, but to completely build the culinary master plan as shown by Hanson Island Loups, there would even need to be some initial bumps in the first year that would then be followed by four to five percent for a period of time to meet the cost of capital projects, the cost of meeting your bond requirements, your coverage ratios, cash balances, and so forth, so...
Did you, did you factor in the Gare River water in about twenty years, and that presumably would be a little bit higher than what we're paying now?
Well, that, that's a very good question. What we've assumed on the cost of Jordan Valley is a, roughly a four to five percent... Um, what we've assumed on the cost of Jordan Valley is a, roughly a four to five percent increase for the first 10 years, uh, 10 or so years. From that point forward, um, uh, this may be my recollection only, but we have included a five percent inflator because all projects that Jordan Valley would be looking at, uh, was assumed to be, you know, roughly a five percent inflator. Now, we don't know that, you know, there, there is no term. If, if Bear River were to increase that beyond five percent a year, uh, you know, that's not probably gonna deliver water for some time, we won't know that, um, but, uh, it could affect the long-term feasibility, uh, of that, but that is a.
Chad, do you, uh, have any, um, thing on that?
What we know at this point is that each of the conservancy districts that have, uh, an interest in the Bear River water, they're trying to wait through the legislature because obviously the water, I should say the national, at the national level, the federal government is slowly getting out of the water business. And I shouldn't say slowly, quickly. It's just they're not doing the water reclamation projects anymore at the national level. So it's leaving it up to the state to take the front. So in this particular project, for example, the conservancy district is working really hard, uh, with the legislature to try to get a state-sponsored initiative so that i- it's a state solution, not a conservancy district solution. So the real answer is yes, we're seeking help to try to mitigate the cost so that the residents themselves are not bearing the entire cost, but the state is gonna take the brunt of it, at least that's the attempt of what we're trying to do.
Uh, and Mr. Polish, just as a thought, um, what we would typically often recommend for a long-term financial plan, even without significant projects, bonding and so forth, is at least a, you know, maybe a three percent cost inflator. Whether that happens as a bump every few years or every, but that just takes care of the cost of inflation. And so we didn't want to be excessive, but yet there's still minimal costs that, uh, I think even Jordan Valley would have to handle with inflation plus projects. So that's a very good question, thank you. So this is a graph that we've created based on the very basic, uh, uh, policies that we have followed, which is roughly no subsidy. And if you look back again, in 2020, you have a very large division between particularly alternative one and the other two alternatives. And so, uh, sorry, obviously, when you hit to about 2035 or so, things start to look better, but we have to present what the rates would look like today or in 2020, not at some point down the road. And so based on some really rough calculations from your current culinary water system, uh, uh, structure, recognizing that your secondary system would have meters, unlike a un-metered system where you can use about all, all the water you want, probably you're gonna have a secondary water structure very similar to your culinary, current culinary system. And so we just, we just did some, some rough calculations, uh, to show what the approximate amount of each scenario would cost in the terms of one entire year to a homeowner of a quarter acre lot up to a one-acre sized lot. And so you can see there's a pretty sharp differential between scenario one and the others. Now, 30 years from now, this picture turns all around, but, uh, the most relevant point was to say what is gonna happen immediately. So here is what, uh, uh, we've talked about a little bit on, on rate increases. Uh, you'll see under 2017, to complete the actual master plan as presented, uh, there would need to be increases on culinary and then long-term increases on, uh, secondary and culinary into the, into the future. However, uh, in reality, probably that list of projects will be amended, adjusted, pushed back, however, to, to develop the, uh, rate policies that, uh, that you feel best. But for the analysis, we have completed exactly what the master plan has presented. So, uh, as we set the rates, uh, we wanted, as I mentioned before, to meet all bond recoverments or bond requirements of, of 1.25 times coverage. We want to maintain a reasonable amount of cash, uh, on hand and keep the city in a position that is strong and viable financially. Now, just as an illustration, our scenarios that we have presented so far have not included any subsidy of culinary water to secondary water, to bring the rates of secondary waters to something more comparable to what, uh, a person would pay today for culinary. And so what I did was, I just came up with how much of a subsidy, uh, the price per acre foot would have to increase by to be able to make those secondary water scenarios viable in the short term. And so again, we have a crossover point about 2035, 2038, uh, but culinary water prices per acre foot, what you would charge per acre foot across the city would have to increase, uh, by almost 16% uh, in one or two years, an average of about 10%. Uh, or under scenario two, increase momentarily for 12% or an average of about 5% to be able to have culinary help pay for the initial upfront costs of, of establishing a secondary water system under either alternative. Any questions on this?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Is that 10% for scenario one and 5% for scenario two?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, uh, our finding point, again, is we have a crossover for alternative one, the expanded scenario in 2035 or 19 years in the future, and so, so, alternative two would have a crossover about 2038. Um, we would have, uh, a large amount of subsidies that would be required to meet those crossover points, approximately 71 million in total, uh, for 25th, or 2035. Scenario two would require about 54 million, uh, through 2038. And that's what those bars were, as I was showing on that previous slide, the, the amount of subsidy. And so, uh, I guess, uh, we've just talked about this. I guess what we want to talk a little bit about tonight is, uh, in terms of general policies, is this a long-term issue where you're looking for long-term savings? Is it a short-term issue where you're looking at the impact on rates? Uh, where is the best place to save money? Short-term, long-term? Uh, that's essentially kind of what we're, we're talking about here. Uh, if you were to proceed with a secondary alternative, how would you like to structure your actual secondary water rates? That's another policy discussion. So, so with that, um, uh, I'd like to open it up for any questions or any, any thoughts, any, uh, points of concern. Thank you.
Questions? Mayor, I have one.
Yes, please.
Did you factor in then the cost of establishing a secondary water department or the expansion of the culinary water department in there?
Yes, that's a very, very good question. In fact, we met on that the other day. Um, uh, I had recollected that Hanson Island Loos had included a percentage of the construction costs to be used for, uh, enhanced salaries, things such as equipment, vehicles and, and other items, you know, broadly. Uh, I think the point of concern was, is, uh, as we looked at the costs, they were very much water-related, however, there was a percentage to that that was, uh, applicable to staffing and, and so forth. And so if you looked at just those costs alone, uh, it was much, it should have been much less than what the total was, because the total did include, uh, what you've just mentioned, the staffing and so forth.
I just have a comment. Um, I think like when Hanson Island Loos presented the, the bill for building such a infrastructure was so astronomical that I have dismissed this, uh, without further thought. Um, I'd like to hear what the rest of the council thinks.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar thought, the price tag is daunting and that, that's where a lot of my concerns lie. I'd like to see us proceed with this because I'm concerned about water availability into the future. Um, but that, that price tag is a, daunting is probably the best word. When it comes to the rate structure, uh, this is where I have probably the most concern because as a resident of the older, more established portion of the city, it's not likely that I'm going to be able to benefit from lower secondary water rates, ever. So I'm, I, I still see a benefit for the city as a whole because perhaps this will stave off some of those other, uh, needs, like pushback and need for the Bear River project or water from other sources if we have some folks in the city who have access to secondary water. But myself, I'm going to be stuck paying the higher culinary rates in perpetuity because there's minimal chance of getting secondary to where I live. So I don't want to find myself subsidizing, or the city subsidizing, infrastructure for just a small group of people that the entire city can't benefit from. Again, that said, I know that just contradicted what I said a second ago where it does benefit all of us in some ways, but I want to find a, a rate structure that would, that would fairly balance all of that. I'm not sure what that is. And until we find out rate structure, I'm not comfortable moving forward. I'd want to see something where the folks who are enjoying the savings from lower secondary water rates down the road are also the ones who are paying for the bulk of the infrastructure. Um, I, I don't know how to do that yet, though. And given the significant capital outlay upfront, I don't know if that's the best use of city dollars at this point in time. That said, I don't want to put it completely off, but I'd like to see if there's other options, perhaps if we can find a way to take care of the places where there are already pipes and, pipes in place. I mean, if we're gonna do the purple pipe areas and then require a new development, if there's a way to bring down that price tag and ensure that that's being paid for by the folks who are benefiting from it, the, the, en- ensure that the bulk of the cost is being paid by the folks who enjoy the bulk of the, the benefit. I just don't know how to do it yet, so I'm not ready to move forward yet, but I don't want to push it off the table altogether. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure if this question is for you, my answer for you and for public work, so y'all can field this one. Will, uh, will the availability of secondary water anywhere in the city help keep culinary water rates lower? In other words, will it affect that peaking factor that our culinary water rates are based on going forward? For example, we build out this system under option A that reduces our culinary need by 77, 59 acre-feet. Am I right? Does that mean that our culinary water rate, because our demand is lower, our culinary water rate will also be lower?
I think I can try to answer that, but Justin probably has a better, better idea. But our, uh, the peaking factor is determined during the summer, in July sometime, depending on when, whenever we take the most water, and that determines the, um, the rate for the rest of the year. So if we reduce the peaking factor, uh, reduce our water rate, uh, water usage during the summer, then it would, it would reduce that, that peaking factor as well, uh, we're comparing against other cities and, uh, it would reduce our overall rates.
Okay, so, so theoretically then, the more secondary, more lawns we have water with secondary water, the fewer lawns we have water with culinary water, therefore the peaking especially, I was, I think that's where the mo- bulk of the peaking comes from, is from lawn usage.
Yes.
I don't think we take more showers in July. Maybe we should. Um, I know I should. Um, so, so the, the point there, the point that I'm making is, is overall water rates in general in the city for culinary water would be lower if secondary water's in place. Um, therefore, everybody does benefit. It's, it's kind of where I was, if the answer was what I thought it was, that's where I'm going with that. Not to the same degree, obviously, but, but to a degree, so. And again, I, I agree with Councilmember McConaughey, I'm not sure how comfortable I am with, like, a definite direction at this point without more ideas of how we're gonna structure this rate-wise and things. Thanks.
If I, if I might add just one quick thought on that, uh, this, the, we did see some reductions in culinary, uh, slight, but then there was also the potential, uh, depends on how the scenario stacked up where you could have relatively the same amount of capital projects needed for culinary, relatively speaking, but now you're dividing it across the lesser demand. So overall, we tried to keep it so that the culinary did have a slight reduction, but there's always the potential that the cost could be roughly the same, but with lesser amounts of acre-feet to divide that cost by. So it could go either way.
I'd just like to point out that you can do the same thing, uh, by getting more storage built, uh, by purchasing more water in the future, um, Bear River than we currently have supplied from the Provo River drainage. Um, there's a million things you can do besides have secondary water. The other factor that I think this council definitely needs to consider is, for the first time that it's been publicized, but not the first time that it's happened, is a, uh, algae bloom in secondary water. And I don't think that's gonna get any less in the future as, as water sources are used more and the water is more stagnant. I think that becomes, and also, I didn't see in Hanson Island Loos's study, a filtration, filtration system, and I think that that would be required, some kind of filter on the water, uh, to filter it beyond what the TDS is now. I don't think in the future that will be allowed to be sprinkled on lawns where people are, um, or shrubbery or anything where people are, can have contact to it. We saw it was shut down for a time period this year. Um, so I think the council needs to look at that for longevity as well.
Mayor?
Yes?
We don't necessarily need a decision tonight, because this is, could be a decision for a long period of time in the future. Um, Dave Murphy and I built a secondary water system in Riverton when grants were available and things like that, so if you have any questions on what it takes to put a secondary system, you can certainly ask us at another time and we can bring this back in a month for a final decision and we'll go from there.
Councilmember Neches.
I don't have a question, it's just more comments, uh, just a couple facts. One, I really appreciate the report, I'm seeing the actual number, 7,700 acre-feet of water. To me, suddenly I have something that actually makes sense to me, I can wrap my arms around it. So we talked about 7.7,000 acre-feet, acre-feet of water in the option one that was presented, what we could save. I, I don't have it readily available, the annual last year, what we use as a city, I didn't have it handy, but I did just look up current as of now, this is September through July of this current year, so we're, we're missing August and September, August being one of the hottest ones. Um, but right now our use in these, uh, 10 months, it's 11,800 acre-feet of water. Now, July was 3,700 acre-feet, so if August is similar, I mean, we're on, we're pretty close, probably gonna hit somewhere between 17,000 and 19,000 acre-feet of water this year is what I would just guess, if I'm just throwing a guess at it. Now, we're talking in a number that here that potentially we can save 7,700 acre-feet of water by using option one. So that just kind of gives us the numbers.
Sure.
We can compare, uh, apples to apples as far as what we're doing. That's just one comment I wanted to put out. Um, yeah, I'm surprised, uh, the sticker shock always gets us, I mean, you look at that, it's, it's immense cost. One other thought I want to throw out there is, I don't see this as a West Jordan problem, I see it as a West Jordan, a Harem, a, uh, South Jordan problem. It's, it's, it's a problem at large, and I don't know if perhaps we can get other entities involved, maybe Jordan Valley Water, and see if, if this is a solution that they would be involved in, interested in getting engaged in with multiple communities rather than just West Jordan, leaving us out on our own. Because it is, I think it's, it's, I'll say global in the sense of a community problem, not just a West Jordan problem. And, and maybe there's something that could be done in that, but maybe the question needs to be asked, is it worth the cost, or is it better just to invest the money in the Bear River and, and plan on that route as the only way to get us through the next 40, 60 years and beyond? Because we know once we tap into the Bear River, for us, that's pretty much it. Um, that's where our water source is now. But again, by then, maybe we're gonna be at build-out, we'll be fine. But I guess maybe that's just me thinking out loud, maybe we can invite a larger audience into this discussion. The sticker shock does have me sitting back going, whoa. I mean, when you start looking at potentially almost for your smaller house, potentially three times the cost of culinary on day one, everybody's gonna look and say, are you nuts? Um, but the, but you think beyond that, and you think 30 years from now, and it's, it footfalls. And that's, but it's hard to get there, it's hard to sell that, so. Anyway, I guess that's just me thinking. Anyway, I guess that's just me thinking out loud, like I said, maybe we can talk more about those issues.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. That's exactly, uh, kind of what I'm thinking, is that initial, that initial price for those homes, nobody's going to pay that, and nobody who lives in those homes, on average, will be there in thirty years when it flips. Um, so, there's got to be a way to, to, for lack of a better term, socialize that across time and across residence, so that it's more palatable for anybody, if it's going to be feasible at all. Uh, I think without some sort of rate evening subsidy of some kind, whether it's a subsidy or whether it's a bond, or whether it's, you know, sos- socialization of the rates or, or what, it's got to be, there's, there's no way that was, that's, that's feasible to just introduce a couple hundred dollar extra per month bill to the average homeowner. I, I could, yeah, that's, thanks.
So, uh, is the council's direction that we'll study this further?
Yeah.
The only thing for me, and I want council to weigh in on this, is, uh, we're building a very large project storm drain up Seventieth South that, uh, the first section had, I believe, a twenty-four inch, uh, secondary water system associated with the storm drain, and staff, I believe, needs direction not to be putting that line in with the storm drain at this time, uh, because, well, I just, I think that, I don't think it's feasible personally to pump the water eleven hundred feet in elevation from the Jordan River, period. But that's just my opinion. Uh, many people believe it is, and it will be at some point, but, uh, I certainly don't want any more pipe put in the ground at this point that's a dry pipe, uh, until we have a decision from the council. So I'd like to hear what the council's opinion is, uh.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, is not, and this is a question for anybody, is not one reason we had to pay out a several million dollar settlement not too long ago is because we forced somebody to put in some dry pipes and then ended up not using them?
I don't want to comment on that, but I think...
Uh, it's just that we lost it, so it's not like it's, uh...
Yeah, I know, but...
It's not like, it's not private anymore, so, I'm just wondering if we forced somebody to put in dry pipes now and having had that precedent...
It's us putting in the dry pipe.
Oh, the city, okay, I got you. Nevertheless...
Yeah, the same, same issue.
Right.
So, uh, we'll study it further, uh, we don't want to put dry pipes in at this point until we have a decision made on the future, figure out the costs of the secondary water system.
Councilmember Burton.
How soon are they to pass the special dry pipes in as we speak?
Summer end right now, but the project was completed this year.
And are we going to... That stage is starting immediately?
I hoped it, we'll get it out in January.
Dave?
Um, just to be clear, uh, you have prod- in the Seventieth Phase Two design, you have dry pipes slated to go under the concrete section at Redwood only, and for the bridge project at Seventieth, you have a dry pipe to go under the bridge structure now with, and that's being designed now, and whether you want to pull off the stops on that, just hold it, I need to know, because with what we just did with UDOT and how fast that project's moving, we either have to stop that design and stop that pipe from going in the ground, or put it in under that concrete that's going to be forty-year concrete, that you're not going to be able to get that kind of, at all. So that's, that's the choice you'll have to make now, really, in the next month, and give me some direction which way to turn there, because, uh, I, I don't have any more flexibility on time there.
I want that decision for you tonight, right now, so, so that you know.
Councilmember Connaughton.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we know the differences in cost verse, i- if we continue with the dry pipe versus if we don't, you know, if we say stop that? Is there re-engineering that has to be done, or...
Well, they're only talking about a couple of sections, and I think there's wisdom in putting, I wouldn't stop what is being planned now, even if it didn't in the future get used for a secondary line, having an extra line under those two slab sections of concrete Redwood and Bangor, it could be used for a casing at some point in the future if that's, uh, at least be there. I, I wouldn't stop that, that would be my opinion, but to spend a hundred plus dollars a foot to install it anywhere else, uh, it's not fiscally responsible, in my opinion, based on the numbers that we see that the system will cost.
I'm in agreement with that, Mayor. I prefer to leave what we have in place under Rubble Road, under, under Bangor, and then then proceed with that. Originally, my thought had been, if we have dry pipe there, great, when we're ready, we can use it, but if it sounds like this not the preferred approach, then we'll just wait until we're ready to do it and do it right at the time.
So the direction is we'll continue to study this, uh, we'll put those two sections that are being designed now in, but nothing else until we get a decision from the council to move forward with some se- section of this.
Well, we'll look at putting it on the, on the agenda on the twelfth, then October twelfth. That could give us about a month, if you have questions, uh, feel free.
That's great.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, are we going to take the ten minute break?
Second. Have a motion by Councilmember Burton, and a second by Councilmember Nichols, discussion of the motion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ten minute break.
Item seven D is going to be moved from the agenda for this evening, we will move to item seven E. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution sixteen dash one hundred, amendment in the uniform fee schedule for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Steve, Mr. Mayor?
Good night, Mayor. Uh, you've seen this before. We'd like to bring, uh, this to, um, a vote tonight, and, uh, we have some slides that, uh, Steve has that, uh, we can go over and then, uh, ask, ask questions after that, so, Steve.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor and council, um, it's good to be here. Uh, keep in mind that, uh, Justin Stoker is also here, he's a little bit more familiar with the operations expenses and some specific line items. The analysis that I worked on is a little bit more of a broad, big-picture kind of a, uh, analysis looking at trends and total expenses as opposed to the, the line items. Um, I probably don't need to go through a long presentation, but I'd like to start with just one slide to give you an idea of how the analysis, uh, was created. Uh, this is just a sample here, but it represents pretty accurately the, the kind of picture that we have for the, the main utilities, water, sewer, and storm. Costs generally go up, not a big surprise, but they go up and down, kind of like the stock market, right? So, uh, nobody likes to raise rates, lower rates, raise them again, year after year, we try to keep them as stable as possible. One way to do that is to look at trend lines, it's pretty simple. You ignore the ups and the downs and pick a center, a trend line and shoot to, to, uh, make your revenues match that trend line. That's exactly what we did in this analysis. Um, that triangle, the blue triangle, is a theoretical target that we would need to meet, uh, in order to cover the expenses that we're expecting to see in the next couple of years. Um, we looked at as many years into the future as we could, um, in, in some cases, just only one year into the future because we don't expect any major changes, but in cases where we know of expenses that are coming in the next two, three, five years, we included those and went that far into the future. And in this case, uh, we went, um, up to twenty nineteen, um, which we did for a couple of the utilities. The green line represents cash on hand, cash reserves. If we do not change our revenues, cash will go down, we'll have to rely on money in the bank to cover our expenses. Pretty simple. In most cases, that cash would disappear within a few years if we did not change our revenues. Um, now, that leads to the next big question. I realize that, that, uh, that issue of how much money we have in reserves is, is big, that's, that's an important issue. Um, and maybe that needs to be discussed. I don't know if, uh, the city has ever set any, any firm targets, or even any flexible targets of any sort, of how much cash you'd like to have on hand. That would certainly help staff in making recommendations if, if we knew some sort of a minimum balance that you'd like to keep. Maybe that, maybe that's a discussion for another time, but the, the question is, how much is reasonable to have in the bank? Um, some recommendations that staff gave a few years ago, uh, based on AWWA standards and APWA standards. Long story short, um, the standard for the industry is anywhere from three months to twelve months of operating expenses. A quarter of a year, all the way up to one full year's worth of operating... A quarter of a year, all the way up to one full year's worth of operating expenses. In this case, that green line, if you saved, if you had one year's worth of operating expenses in the bank, that green line would match the red line. So you can see that if we don't raise rates, that green line drops pretty quickly. But of course, if, if you choose to have less money in the bank, maybe three months or four months' worth, the green line would be a third or a fourth of that distance between the bottom and the red line. So anywhere in that range is generally considered acceptable. So that's something to keep in mind. I understand that the city manager's recommendation for street lights is to make zero changes in the rates. So I'm assuming that most of our discussion tonight will deal with the other four: water, sewer, storm drain, and solid waste. And I'll say that I'm not very familiar with the most recent discussions with ACE disposal regarding solid waste. But my analysis was done a few months ago and, and it showed that solid waste was actually in the, in the worst position of all of the utilities. And within twelve months or less, that utility would go negative in its cash balances in, in twelve months or less unless rates were changed. And that's simply because costs go up and the contract allows their costs to go up. We simply haven't increased our revenues to match those costs. So that's a little bit of general background of how the analysis was done. Without going through the whole study that was provided to you, do you have any questions that I could answer?
Questions from Council?
Or for Justin?
Councilmember Jacob? Thank you Mayor. Steve, you have this slide with the projected changes. As far, now this, this slide specifically, is this one particular fund or is this all?
I used this as a sample. This happens to be the sewer slide.
Okay. Okay. That was my second guess. My first guess was, I know. Do, do we have these slides? This, I love this analysis. It's much better than anything I've seen in the report so far. Do we have this for all four funds and for, and current versus projected with the increases that have been proposed?
Yes, this was provided in the twelve-page report, I think a couple of times to city council. I'd be glad to send, send it out again.
I'm just looking well as provided for this meeting, that's all I have.
I see.
And I have a lot of tables, but no pretty charts.
So it's, that's a good point.
So I guess you have them, but nobody else has them tonight?
Yeah, and, and maybe it was not included in, in the packet since this is the fourth time that we've discussed. But I can provide that to you if you need it.
Thanks.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you Mayor. My question was going to be the same when you spoke about the information that we've all been provided. All I have is the printed out, proposed, uniform fee schedule. So I have not seen this and I was not here at the meeting where this was discussed previously, so I have not been privileged of what's been shared in council meetings before. So this is the first time I'm seeing these slides. So anything that's not in the packet, I have not seen. I do know that there was one email that came across a couple hours before council meeting, but I haven't had a chance to review that one yet.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you Mayor. I, I've been trying to, the water rates are quite complicated, I've found, as I've been looking into this. And it appears that our water rates, by what we pay, and I got this nice chart that was provided for me today, but it looks like we have several different costs depending on where we are when we get the water, what time of year it is, for summer and winter rates. And we've got different zones. And so I came up with this chart that shows we have twelve different costs in our water that we actually pay. But yet we don't charge twelve different costs across the city. We kind of have a balanced cost. And according to my calculations, check me if I'm right, because these, they're odd numbers because in order for me to figure out exactly what really costs, I'd need to know how many gallons of water we get at different rates, at different times, which I don't have that available to me. But I come out with a ballpark of about one twenty per thousand. Does that sound like we're in the right ballpark?
That's right. For commercial customers, they pay one dollar twenty-eight per thousand gallons.
Okay. And then trying to calculate what our cost is is difficult. Now look at this scale that was given to us in the packet. It's not a pretty calculable chart, but it still has some. That's all I'll look at. This one here. It, it appears that the low end of the residential and the high end on some others, it looks like on some of them, we're actually selling it for less than we pay for. But in middle areas, we're charging more than we pay for. So our rate scale is, is interesting because some people are paying less than what we're paying for it and others are paying more than what we're paying for it. Is that correct?
That's accurate. And, and that's actually what most cities do nowadays. If you have a tiered structure, that's, that's how it works. If you've got four different rates, two of those rates will probably be making money and two of those lower tiers will probably be losing money, but on average, you break even.
Okay. So if I look at a residential, it says three-quarter inch meter, charge twenty-four seventy-seven plus zero seven thousand gallons, which is one point one one thousand gallons. So I take this a dollar eleven per thousand gallons, that's what they're paying, which is less than what we pay. So we are helping out the, the small user, but then as with the residential, if we get bigger, we collect up higher. So that makes it complicated. So I can't just look at this and say, oh, this is what we charge, this is what we pay, we should raise our rate this to cover our costs. And you can have extra money to cover our expenses for maintaining and adding lines. Is there any city that has a, what's the word? A, a flat rate for commercial properties and then a tiered rate for residential that we could? Because I like the tiered rate for residential. I think that's a good incentive for conserving. Whereas I don't think businesses, particularly if they're a large user, need an incentive for saving because they have the incentive by getting their bill every month, which is thousands of dollars compared to a residential, which might be fifty or a couple hundred dollars. So I guess my question comes back. I would like, what I'd like to see happen is for our commercial users, we find out what it costs us, put a percentage on there and then charge them for that. So we know that we're covered. We know we're making some money. We have some extra to put down for any day. On our residential users, do the same thing with the lowest tier and add a, a percentage for the tier breaks as they go up to help provide conserving water. And I don't know if we can do that with what we have here. Is that something that we could act, is that a feasible idea? That's the dearth work nutrition idea.
Let me talk, let me talk to that question. So Jordan Valley Water, I'm going to try to answer your question in, in a detailed, informative way, hopefully gives you more information. So Jordan Valley Water provides us water at four different elevations and they call it zone A, B, C, and D, which may be on your chart. Zone A, B, C, and D, as you move lower in the alphabet, they charge more money to cover their pumping costs to move it higher up the hill. So zone D, which is the highest elevation in the valley, tends to have the highest costs associated with it because of pump, because of pumping. And then additionally, Jordan Valley Water charges lower rates in the winter than they do in the summertime because of the demand, the volume that's running through the system. So several years ago, the city council made a conscious decision to blend all of those rates so that the, the residences and the commercial residents are paying the same amount regardless of which Jordan Valley zone the water's being drawn from and regardless of the season. So that you don't end up with the rates changing depending on where your business lies and which side of the street. And so that was a, that was a policy decision made by the council many, many years ago. And so if, if the council would like us to look at revising that so that we, the rates more coincide with the, the water rates that Jordan Valley is charging the city, we can definitely do that. But it is extremely complicated and it could create disparities amongst the city depending on where you live.
I, I don't like the idea of charging from different rates for different locations, even though that's forward to it, because some of it, we buy from Jordan Valley and we pump it ourselves. So we're paying lower costs, but we have additional costs incurred because we need to pump it ourselves. So, so I like the standard rate there, that way. However, I'm concerned, and maybe you have a handle on it. I'm concerned that we're not sure exactly how much we're paying for the water until we get our bill, because it depends on where it is, how much we use, and when we use it. But yet we have a flat structure over here that we're charging for it and sometimes we're making money and sometimes we're losing money. If we could generate it on a percentage basis and take these numbers and conglomerate together and come out with one number that we looked at for the, the prior year and use that as our revenues to go off of, and then put a percentage on top of that. So we're, you know that we're going to be making money regardless of how much we use, because the more we use, it would be on there. And then we'd know we'd make money. Do we know how much money we made from our water last year?
We do, and that's exactly, the, the system that you just explained is exactly how we plan for budgeting purposes every year. Is we look at the previous year's usage and we apply a certain percentage based upon growth to that to try to estimate out the amount of water that's going to be used in the future years. The problem is, is that, and just for some brief examples, in twenty fifteen, we had a really cool May that postponed a lot of people turning on their irrigation systems. And then in twenty fourteen, we had a really cold, wet August. And that had a huge impact across the entire valley and the different water systems. And one week of cold weather during the summer or wet weather during the summer could mean half a million dollars in revenue or expenses. And so when we, when we look at budgeting, we really do look at like the average and try to apply a percentage to it. But it, it's so dependent upon weather that, I mean, the weather man gives us ten days of forecasting, we try to do twelve months to try to determine our water. So we do it okay.
Okay. So I guess the other comment I have is particularly for commercial users, I think it's important for them to know what their bill is going to be. When you have a business, you generate a budget so you can know how much you're going to charge for your wages, what that's going to cost. And if your change, cost changes in the middle of the year, that makes it difficult. So I think somehow we need to put that sort of functions perhaps at the start of the year on January first for our cost increase for their purposes. I can recall several years ago, with the chamber, when the city made a rate increase on the water, they did it mid-year and it was fairly hefty increase. Some large businesses were quite concerned and came back and the chamber convinced the city to relook at it and they brought the rates down and then changed it to a January first increase, where this one wasn't mentioned January first. So I guess what I'm saying is, is for the, the big users, if we took this percentage that's listed on this chart right now, which is seven point two percent, that is a, a big hike on them. And they're not having their budget. I would be in favor of a smaller percent rate for the larger users. But until we, I can work this out on the residential, I wouldn't be in favor of a residential rate increase except for the smallest tier since we can see that we are losing money on them already. So anyway, that's, that's my comments at this point. I'll call out some more questions and then, thank you.
I agree with Councilmember Burton. I don't think that any part of the city should be subsidizing any other part of the city by seventeen cents per thousand. And it's always amazing to me, as many times as I've seen, every time we come to a chart that shows that we want to raise fees, that all of a sudden you have a dramatic spike in the next calendar year of the costs going up. It never ceases to amaze me that immediately we have a giant spike that goes up by four million plus in one year. I don't know how that happens every time we're talking about a, a rate increase. And I also want to state, I've spoke on this enough and I'll be silent the rest of the time till we vote. But I believe it's irresponsible to raise rates for two things. One is, like Councilmember Burke stated, this water is very complicated and we need to fix it, in my opinion. So raising anything and doing anything with it at this point before strategic plan is the wrong thing to do. Secondly, it's irresponsible for this council to raise any rates when you have a hundred percent of the operating costs in the bank. So in other words, you've charged a hundred percent over the years, however many years it takes, it looks like five or six years, to get a hundred percent of the operating cost sitting in the bank on our rate payers. I think that's irresponsible. I'm silent now. Council? Councilmember Nichols?
I don't so much have a question other than is there more to the presentation? Do we still have, do we still mind going over some of the, the rate differences?
I, I don't need to present anything, but I can if you'd like. You'd see more charts like this.
Well, more so, I know, Justin, you had worked on a presentation to help me kind of understand some of the numbers. I don't know if you wanted to present that. I think it would be really useful. Chris, or Councilmember McConaughey and I met with, went over to Justin Stoker a couple of weeks ago, just kind of just saying, hey, look at a, a rate increase. What I want to see is rather than just throwing out a percentage to get through a year, is actually say what's, what are the needs that are making us get to that, that percentage level? And so with that, we talked to Mark to make sure it was okay to staff you some time on that and he thought it was worthwhile. So I think Justin put some time into this. It would be worthwhile if we could see that.
I can go through that real, I can go through that quickly. I know that this also addresses some of the things that the mayor just brought up regarding the huge massive spike. And, and I, the information I prepared kind of goes into the detail of, of the day to days to kind of explain the current situation, what the red line really means, to just kind of help put some reality to the, to the line chart. So I just put together a couple of slides that I think addresses some of these day-to-day issues. And I, and I just briefly touched on each of those four different categories. The first one, culinary water, you know, why is there that spike? I mean, I just kind of tried to highlight here a little bit of those. Jordan Valley Water raises their rates on the source water the city purchases from them on an average of four and a half percent every year. That's, that's roughly four hundred thousand dollars each year that we add to our expenses. We're also finding, especially over this last year, that a lot of our water infrastructure, especially the water infrastructure on the east side, is starting to age. We're seeing a, a, a lot of water main breaks happening along Thirteenth West. And in those, those neighborhoods, that's requiring a lot of attention, costs, and materials for staff to go and repair those lines. And the materials that they're using, pipe patches, sleeves, new pipe, those costs continue to go up every year. We're not seeing, I wish pipe costs stayed the same. And then some of those other things to address what the mayor was talking about, why there was, why was there a bump? We're seeing right here, the SCADA system that the city has to communicate with all of the different water stations, the reservoirs, the booster pumps, the pressure valves, all of that is outdated. We found that about thirty percent of it has failed, is no longer communicating with us. And most of it needs replacement, is, is thirty to forty years old. And so we're currently going through a master plan process with Brown and Caldwell Engineering to determine what we need to do. to determine, um, what we need to do to get our SCADA system back to where we can use it and help and help monitor and control the system. And it just some rough numbers without the the that SCADA master plan finished, is that's going to be between a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars just to start, and some of that infrastructure replacement. This last year, the two million gallon reservoir that's, uh, near the airport, intersection of Fortieth and, um, Jordan Landing Parkway, uh, started leaking, and, uh, the state ordered us to shut that down. Um, that's going to require us to do some major rehabilitation on that reservoir to keep it online. So as, we did get permission for us to use it through the summer, because the city only has, had, the city has thirty-seven and a half million gallons of storage. Uh, so thirty-seven and a half million gallons of storage compared to the peak usage that the city sees in July is fifty-two million. And so the city has roughly eighteen hours of storage available to the city. And so we tend to have a lot of pumps running full-time, we have our wells running full-time just to compensate for the fact that we only have about eighteen hours of storage in the system. And that's, um, that kind of goes into this next line right here with the extra pumps needed at the airport booster station. And the airport booster station, uh, currently has an empty slot available when it was constructed. Uh, twelve to fifteen years ago, it was, it was built with an empty slot for expansion, and we're seeing the need to add in additional pumps there and to upsize one of the other pumps, which was put in as a half-size, uh, to be able to meet the demand and pump that water up to the Grizzly Reservoir and up to the U-111 reservoirs. And so those additional pumps are needed just to meet the the demand that's happening on the west side of the city. We're also finding that the the registers that are attached to the water meters, um, are using a technology that's no longer supported and it's being phased out. And so the new meters, which are are called AMI registers, uh, are based upon a tower read system rather than a drive-by system, and those registers are about thirty percent more expensive than the older technology. And we're being forced to to move to that direction as these older registers are no longer produced. And so, um, this kind of touches a little bit upon what, uh, Steve did. This is just a summary from the CAFR that shows, you know, the the rise in operating and spen- expenses, how they increase. Um, we're seeing roughly an eight percent increase in operating expenses through source of supplies, around a six percent. Um, uh, just all of the different things are adding into this overall expense of eight percent that's going up, and none of this includes any new programs or any new services. It's really just maintaining the costs of of inflation and the costs that the city are is forced to deal with, uh, along with the the revenue increase we're seeing is roughly a two point four percent that's related to just growth in new residences. Um, in wastewater, just to paint that perspective really quick, there are three crews of two operators, so there are six individuals that maintain the entire sewer system. Um, there are two guys, there's two men of two, two teams of two men that work on cleaning the system, and one team of two men that inspect the system. And they are maintaining a total of one point six million feet of sewer in the entire city. Those six operators, it's the same crew size as twenty years ago, even though we've added nearly seven hundred thousand feet of sewer to the system since since that time. The the cleaning crews are cleaning on average of six hundred thousand feet of sewer pipe every, I'm sorry, that's every year, and they're cleaning a rough, the entire system roughly every four years, which is meeting industry standard. And that includes about a hundred thousand feet that's dedicated to root cutting and trouble spots, so that really is about four years on cycle. The problem that we're seeing is the inspection crew is is inspecting on average a hundred and seventy-five thousand feet of sewer, and they're only ins- inspecting the pipes every twelve years. And so if there's a root intrusion into the sewer line, we really don't know about it until it's too late, because those roots can go in and and block up the sewer within a matter of two to three years. And the cleaning system, as they go through, as they run the jets down the the sewer system, um, if they don't clean and treat the roots, the jets go right past them, until that root intrusion just causes a complete blockage. Um, solid waste, um, as Steve tou- touched on, ACE's disposals contract, uh, was signed in twenty thirteen, and then subsequently the rates were lowered to match the contract, and then four million dollars was transferred out of solid waste to help with the stormwater fund. ACE's contract allows for a cost of living adjustment every year to their contract, so the past two years have been a one point eight percent each year that's gone into that. And additionally, on February of twenty fifteen, the city council doubled the neighborhood dumpster program, which increased costs by about two hundred thousand dollars per year to the solid waste fund. Um, and that this, I mean, this is after the rates were set back in twenty thirteen. And so this this kind of goes back to what Steve was talking about, that if, right now, between the the neighborhood dumpster program and the c- increased cost to ACE's contract, we're currently losing money every year in the solid waste fund, and we're expected to go in the negative on that fund within about ten months. Uh, with regards to stormwater, and of all the other funds, I think stormwater is the one that's the most urgent. There's a number of different items on here that pertain, uh, to stormwater in a in a somewhat urgent manner. Uh, the first one, the Barney's Watch detention basin, that's the one that is located out near the rec center. Um, if the rec center were to be built, we need to relocate the detention basin, the detention basin on which that rec center is going to be built, at a cost of about one point six million dollars. There's also with the stormwater audit, uh, we received a mandate from the state that the four individuals that we have cleaning, addressing, and inspecting the stormwater system is not adequate, and that we have to raise our standards with regards to to an inspection cleaning in a, uh, of our stormwater system. Currently, those six individuals are addressing the stormwater system roughly every twenty years. We had an incident, uh, just just this past July, I believe, along Fortieth West, where a flooding situation happened, and it was due to a a crushed pipe in the street, and the and the question was asked, when was this pipe inspected? Well, the answer is, it's never been inspected, because there's just not the resources to be able to ma- to make through the entire system with the four individuals that are in the stormwater fund, and the state's recognized that and has to put the city on notice that we need to increase our maintenance, uh, abilities. Additionally, uh, Capital Projects is looking for about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to address neighborhood storm drain projects. A couple of years ago, we had a lot of talk with regards to the neighborhoods just north of Constitution Park, and we added a storm drain line down thirty-three hundred west. But since then, we've addressed several other flooding situations along BMU Drive near the Dorley Park, and also another flooding situation near the Railroad Park Detention Basin. And we are finding more and more of these situations. We found another one, uh, that is, um, in near the Teton Estates area that, uh, is a flooding situation that we need to address, uh, due to, uh, less than adequate storm drain facilities in that area. So the the stormwater fund needs additional funds to be able to address some of these neighborhood flooding situations. And so when we look at the different thing, and this was a, this is a very different approach to what Steve provided, I looked at the water and all of the different items that are coming up, the wastewater, the solid waste, and the stormwater, and tried to add on a r- a a scent or duller increase to what those mean. In this last table, I had, I identified whether or not it was proposed in the increases by the city manager. You can see that a lot of these things in here, the SCADA replacement, the reservoir rehab, they have pumps at the booster station, those are not included in the in the budget. But these are items that we're going to see are are going to hit us squarely in the face in in the coming months or years. Really what the the rate increase addresses is some capital projects, uh, in water, some capital projects in wastewater, it addresses ACE's COLA, the cost of living adjustment, and it addresses the detention basin relocation and the audit requirements in stormwater and a few capital projects. That is all that the rate increases the city manager proposed in the budget are addressing, though we have a great number of needs that are not being addressed. And so I hope that this answers several questions that we've received over the last couple of months of, we, why is there a big, big spike in expenses, and why do costs keep going up? Hopefully this kind of helps paint that perspective of of what, uh, the city's going through and some of the challenges that we face in the future. So I'm I'm open up to any questions.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Justin, on the detention basin relocation, one point six million dollars, if the rec center's not built, we don't have to spend that, right?
That's correct. And also, just to kind of clarify on that, um, that's a one-time expense. Um, the rate increase that I put in here for that, the two dollars and eighty-three cents, that's assuming that you paid for it in one year. If for some reason you can finance the relocation of the detention basin over several years, that number can go down.
Theoretically, could that number, or maybe there's more question for finance, could that one point six million not be paid for out of the forty-five million in bonds we just passed for the rec center? Could that cost not be, uh, again, it's, it seems to me we also have to put in a parking lot for the rec center that we don't have to put in if we don't build the rec center. It's one of those things that it seems that it would go hand in hand.
I think the cost estimates for the rec center are about forty-five million dollars.
Right, so if you add this, it'd be forty-six point six million dollars.
Yeah.
Right, so if we could somehow find a managed way to save one point six million dollars in the rec center, maybe a few less windows and a couple extra walls, or I don't know, whatever it might be. You guys are the geniuses over there, but, uh, you guys are above my pay grade. Then we could theoretically pay for this, uh, it just seems to me that this should be in the rec center budget.
Yes, we could do that.
Okay. Which just seems to me that's where it should go, so if that was the case, two dollars and eighty-three cents, then could be applied to the one, two, three, four, five, not quite, but three or four of the, uh, rate increases that are not included in the water fund, for example, if we were to move that, you know, somewhere else.
There are some rules and regulations that the city faces with regards to moving water between enterprise accounts that we try to avoid, that the counties.
Right, no, I'm just talking purely the the increase, we would just not increase the rate on stormwater, and we would increase the rate on cul- on culinary water.
If we if we raise any rates, I suggest it be on stormwater. That's the one that we're, we're kind of under mandate to to address.
Right, and I would leave the seventy-seven cents for the audit and the one dollar twenty-eight for the capital projects, I wouldn't be touching those, I'm just talking about that two dollars and eighty-three cents for the detention basin relocation. Two dollars and eighty-three cents covers seventy-two plus sixty plus forty-eight plus forty-eight and about half of the ninety-eight.
Oh, that's right.
So I'm I'm talking about net impact to your residential utility bill, leaving it the same as what has been proposed, yet reallocating it, putting the detention basin cost in with the rec center, because quite honestly, I don't know how that's not already there. And leaving the net increase the same, but still taking care of a lot of these other bills at the same time.
Just bear in mind that there's twelve and a half million dollars sitting in the surrender account right now. That could be built today without affecting, uh, the Seventy-Eighth South project or any other. Did you have any other questions?
No, that was the main one for me.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of stormwater, my memory serves that we have recently raised that rate, that fee, is that correct?
The rate hasn't changed, I believe, since twenty thirteen.
Oh, the ERU calculation has changed.
The ERU calculation, I believe, changed last year.
That's.
And that only affects commercial residents.
For large residences, right?
No, it doesn't affect any residential customers.
Okay, and that's in effect, we are getting that additional?
I believe so. That that ERU change really went to help support a bond for Seventy-Eighth South and several other capital projects. That revenue that came from the bond really isn't going towards maintenance or operations or any of those other needs that we that we're seeing, any of those critical, uh, infrastructure failures like Bateman Pond or pipe failures, it's really just going to capital projects. And that ERU change, that money that's coming from ERU change is paying for the bond.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, a couple of things. First of all, going back to my earlier comment about the information from the various studies that were available with the agenda, I went back and checked online, and the February twenty-fourth meeting, Mark was initially discussing, just had the utility fee structure. Uh, March the ninth had the same sheet, uh, June twenty-second was when we had a public hearing, it had just the same sheet, the, well, the nineteen-page document, and then the same thing on August twenty-fourth had the same same thing. So up until today, this is the first I've seen of the slides.
Absolutely, you need slides.
Oh, and and I know the one you're presenting right now was a a last-minute edition, but really what I want to make is the point that it would be really helpful for some of this ancillary information to be made available to the public, um, and be included with the packets prior to them being published. There's a number of residents that watched this part a little bit more closely, since this impacts everyone almost instantly. And while we'd like to be able to tell them, or trust us, we're looking at it, they'd like to see what we're looking at and and share their two thought, or their their two cents and share their thoughts with us, so. The other thing I wanted to say is, uh, this comes close to what I was hoping for. Let me see if I can share my screen to show you what I'm looking at real fast, and Brian, yours might change here in just a second. So Brian, on your screen, there's a kind of right in the middle underneath where it says new whiteboard, there's a little arrow pointing to the top right and top left. Go up to, uh, just to left.
Up here.
And then just straight down, there's that little arrow pointing top right, top left. Yeah, hit that one? Okay. So this is kind of what I was hoping to see, this is what would make it a lot easier for me to explain support of or opposition to fee increases. Just a really little table, and I appreciate the effort to pull the data out of the the CAFR and make sure it was accurate as possible. I don't know that it can be given perfectly for what we're looking, but just like an example for stormwater, just a rough idea, of that four dollars and two cents that we're paying right now, how much is going to employee expense, equipment, or various projects, and then seeing the start and end date associated with the projects, and saying, here's where we're proposing five seventy-one, that would continue employee expense in equipment, and project one, you can see, is still going on, but this would also have an additional amount for employee expense for equipment, and then here's projects four and five. So if you don't like the rates, we could come back and tell staff, these are the projects that we don't like. When we say don't go the full rate, we want to go, uh, instead of five seventy-one, we want to go with, what's that going to be? Four eleven. Well, you know exactly which project would get that. So that that ultimately would be something that would be very, very helpful.
And we absolutely tried to do that. The the problems that we ran into, and Bill can attest to this, is that the the CAFR for fiscal year fifteen sixteen isn't finished yet, and so, um, it, we don't have that breakdown in employee expenses and equipment and all of that kind of stuff even available for the last fiscal year, let alone the current fiscal year. And so we struggle to really get a grip on anything within the last fifteen months.
And and that that's fine, I'm just going for a best estimate so we have a good idea of about what it would be. Um, I mean, some of this would be like the cost for, if we've got a new project, okay, it's a ten million dollar project, we know on average, or we know that we have X number of users, so fifteen divided by the users, here's, here's what that project would be, uh, because I think that's really where the bulk of it's going to come into play, and some of the other stuff that's more standard, I think we could probably just take ballpark budget numbers, um, even if it's not like the audited actual, i- it gives us a good feel. Anyway, um, that's, that's kind of where I where I'm at with that. I would like to see kind of the breakdown, how much is going where, it's helpful to see where it's going. I still have a hard time supporting it at this point, because, uh, again, up until a few hours ago, the only information that we really had to go off of was just, here's the entire fee schedule, the eighteen-page documents, and no real backing behind it. So I'll, I'll, I'll hold my comments to that for now.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor, I thought of another question. We go back to Justin's screen or Brian's screen, whoever's screen is normally in control. We'll go back to Justin's screen or Brian's screen, whoever's screen is normally in control. Thank you. I was wondering who he was sharing his screen with this whole time, now I know. Principally, so I, I agree that costs go up and rates have to go up too, because that just happens. I don't like increasing rates for one-time expenses. Obviously, increasing rates is an ongoing thing, and one-time expenses are not ongoing things. Just principally speaking. So, with that said, are these rate increases at all intended to pay for future bonds to pay for one-time expenses?
No.
Is that on the table, or is that not even being considered here?
With, with the exception of the detention base and relocation and the stormwater, a lot of these items up here in the water division are things that are, if it's not this year, it's something different next year. The reservoir rehab is something that's just specific to this year, the pumps at the booster station. The AMI system actually should be ongoing. But these items right in here are predominantly one-time expenses, but we expect something new to replace it in the future as we need, as a different reservoir goes down, or we need to rehabilitate a booster pump at this location, or these PRVs start up failing. We anticipate these expenses to continue even though these items right here are addressed.
So theoretically, this could be actually lumped into an O and M type of line item and kind of be almost a little more accurate that way. Even though it is a capital project, it's an ongoing maintenance of the whole system.
It's ongoing maintenance. I just wanted to be specific on, on the items that we're actually looking to maintain. The reservoir rehab, the pumps, the booster station, we had a lightning strike at the pump station at two one eleven and seventy-eight hundred south. We had a lightning strike that took out one of the pumps there that pumps water up to the bench reservoir that feeds the sycamores. Where
I heard it.
there's no other pumps to support that booster station. If we lose one more pump, the sycamores is out of water. And so it's just another example of, of a growing list of maintenance needs that we need to address.
Thank you.
I just have one question for staff. Since we have almost ten million dollars in surplus fund balance, why aren't those three items, second line down to the fourth line down, why aren't they completed already? As on the water. I, because for me, having a, particularly, I'm going to pick on the airport reservoir for two hundred thousand dollars, sitting here in the middle of summer, not being able to use a reservoir when we're talking about peaking charges, I'm wondering why that at least hasn't been bid out, even if it isn't fixed. Now, I don't know the measure of the leak. Can't be very huge for two hundred thousand dollars, but I'm wondering why specifically that one and the other two haven't been complete when there's ten million dollars surplus fund balance in the water department.
It would require a budget adjustment. The current budgets for the culinary water fund do not include these expenses.
No, but that's an emergency. You're talking about pumps, you're talking about a reservoir that starts leaking. All you have to do is bring it on council meeting, and we can make a budget adjustment. We could have brought it tonight.
Could.
Rather than raise the rate. Yes, Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you Mayor. Well, I mean, I think it's a valid question as far as what the current budget is, but I know he just provided up here as an example of what it would be. Because in the column, he says it's not included in the proposed increase, and the proposed increase would not cover that cost. He's assuming that it would come from capital projects based on this report, did I say, am I correct?
No, it's not. These are just additional, this is just a snapshot of additional things that we are looking to address. The capital projects that are down here, the one point eight million dollars that is included, is emergency generators at pumps and wells. It's replacing asbestos pipe in the system that we have to do with in three years. The idea up here is, we're going to take care of these, but they're just not included in the budget, nor does the rate increase address them.
So my question was, am I correct? I think the answer was, yes, I was correct. Just to make sure. I was just trying to make the point that those are not included in the fee increase.
That's correct.
Thanks. They're just giving, they're just an example of what the rate could be. The ones that say yes are, that's the important thing on that graph.
Good, my statement is, why aren't they taken care of when they're ten million dollars sitting there? It's not a statement, it's, that's what's supposed to be happening. Why isn't our agenda today is the question.
Well, maybe that's the better question that we need to get as we weigh this out in our mind is, what those fund balances are and what projects are all filtered out on the list. Basically says that there's ten million dollars there, but ten million dollars of projects are already lined up to spend all of that. And these are excess beyond that. I mean, that's a whole different decision than these are included in that ten million dollar balance. Right, so that's, anyway, that's just.
Well, and I didn't mean these projects to distract from the rate increase. We are addressing these issues and do plan to bring a budget adjustment to address all of them at one time. But we are moving forward with creating bid specifications and documents to be able to address those. We're not just sitting and watching them die.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you Mayor. We'll see if this makes it out my mouth right, making any sense. I'm not under any illusion that no changes are going to be necessary. I'm pretty sure that some of these rates will have to see some sort of adjustment. So I don't want to just deny this and then move forward, but at the same time, there's some additional supporting evidence I think that would be necessary before we do too much. I like the idea of getting a list of capital projects, again, or the, basically, listening. Here's, here's what we have in the bank, and here's how that money is spoken for, or find out if we can have those budget adjustments. I, I wonder what's the best way to move forward? Do we go through this line by line? Do we ask for staff to come back with additional information later? I can tell you straight away, I'm ready to sign off and vote on that one right now, so we don't have to worry about that one with the other four. But I'm wondering how the, how the group's considering moving forward.
Well, after having this four times on the agenda, I'd like to see an up-down vote on the proposed tax rates, is what I'd like to see. And then we'll see how that goes, and then this is what's been recommended by staff.
How would you feel about going through it line by line? Not line by line, like every little item, but utility by utility.
Well, I think we've had four months at least to do that. I think everybody knows where they are. I don't, I don't know that that's appropriate at this point. We have a motion that's been suggested by staff, and we ought to vote on that. It's my opinion.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you Mayor. Correct me if I'm wrong, either our city manager or finance can address this, but these rate increases are part of the budget that was passed. Right? I mean, we passed a budget, a city budget, a couple months ago. That's correct, Council. It's part of it, so if they're not approved, then we'll go through the budget, make some cuts. And make major adjustments, as far as that goes. My, and, and we've already expressed some consternation with the way the budget process was handled this year, and some changes we'd like to see for next year. I'm sure we'll go into detail in January, and each plan exactly what we'd like to see changed. But in, in my opinion, the time to address this was four months ago, or whenever that was, May? Remember we had that special meeting down at the community room where we had the budget come up? Nobody talked about this. We added a million dollars to sales tax revenue, and we took two hundred thousand dollars away from police selling them to add to new officers, and we talked about all this stuff, and we got the enterprise funds, and everybody goes, eh, no questions. We're good. And maybe it was because it was a long night, I don't know. But in my opinion, we've crossed this bridge four months ago, when we decided not to discuss it. When everybody's, everybody's happy with it then, or so it seemed, and
No, everybody was.
Well, okay.
And yes, we've discussed it on two other nights other than this at council meeting.
Yeah, that's all I, all I'm saying is, is if we haven't come up with something better by now, I don't know what's going to happen next.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you Mayor.
Last question.
I move to suspend the rule to allow the meeting to extend beyond nine P M.
Second. Third motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion?
We need, we need a vote called it, let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Thank you Mayor. And then the second item I had in response to Councilmember Jacob. Prior years, the way this had been handled is the fee schedule was addressed independent of the rest of the budget. Fee schedule was usually brought to us sometime between March and April, and then we would look at that and make decisions on that, and then those numbers were later worked into the budget. This time, everything came all at once. So at least on my side, the reason you didn't hear anything was I was anticipating that we would follow what had been done the four prior years where that was addressed separately.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you Mayor. Justin, you mind if I put you on the spot one more time? On the stormwater, specifically on this, this chart that you presented, it indicates the two eighty-three for detention base and the seventy-seven cents for audit requirements and the one twenty-eight for capital projects. Question that was kind of referred to before was the fact that if we pulled the detention base out of that, does that reduce our fee? That we, I mean, in theory, we're thinking that we'd be able to plop it into that project with the rec center. Are we really looking at a dollar, was that a two oh five increase now for the stormwater, and it would meet, it would make the state happy with their auditing requirements?
I have to defer to Steve. Steve did a much more detailed analysis in that. And I believe when he calculated the detention base and relocation, he blended it. The way that he did his, you know, the trending and the projected expenses that cover the ups and downs addressed that, where this is meant on a very micro scale. It's really hard to say if that were to take out what exactly the rates would be. I tried my best to estimate what the audit requirements of the capital projects are.
But I guess what I would ask in your opinion is like, for example, the seventy-seven cents, which is, we're saying is equivalent to about four hundred fifty thousand dollars, is that going to elevate us to the level where the state, you think, would be?
Yes, I believe it would.
Okay, that's really what I'm after, is just that right there is, I'm trying to, I mean, the public needs to know there's a real threat that we're potentially facing fines that have been realized in other communities for not adhering to certain auditing requirements. And we face that as a city, and it would sure be a waste that we're not addressing it, and we have to throw money at a fine rather than actually fixing the problem. So anyway, that's just kind of as I'm thinking on that one. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you Mayor. I move that we deny resolution sixteen dash one hundred, making uniform fees and service charges for fiscal year two thousand seventeen.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Burton and a second by Mayor Rolf. Discussion to the motion. Seen none, so. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you Mayor. I'm hesitant to support this because I'm, I'm pretty sure we do need to change the solid waste fee, again, given the changes we had with the number of dumpsters and the up the cost of those dumpsters, and then the increases built into the contract. And then I'm also concerned about stormwater. So I'm hesitant to outright deny it. At the same time, I'm not ready to support. Oh, where did it go? I'm not ready to support water or sewer because it's just lacking information. Water, water sewer and solid waste, or seeming water and sewer, because that's just lacking information. So I'd be hesitant to throw the whole thing out, but I'd be willing to entertain at least those two.
Councilmember Burton.
I think if we throw this whole thing out, as you put it, we'd be able to come back with one or other of those in a fashion that we can recognize and vote on at a later date. Either way, I don't see it happening tonight.
Let's vote.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Uh, no.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Vote fails three to three. I'm sorry. Mayor, Burton, and Jacob, did you see?
I didn't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vote passes. Vote fails four to two.
Either somebody makes a motion, or we'll move on to the next, and there'll be no action.
Mayor. Councilmember McConaughey.
And actually, this might be a question for people. Can I make a motion to approve just one of the rates in the proposed schedule? Okay. I would move to approve the proposed rate for solid waste.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion? I will not be supporting this motion with five hundred thousand dollars sitting in the surplus fund balance. Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolf?
No.
Vote passes four to two.
Councilmember Nichols.
Looks like, this slide is on, I got the right one. Thank you Mayor. I move that we approve the fee schedule for stormwater with the following change. That we increase the rate to correspond with this chart, the seventy-seven cents and the dollar twenty-eight that covers, basically, it's less than detention base and relocation.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion? Councilmember McConaughey.
So can you clarify what that dollar amount would be?
Two oh five.
So the rate would go from four oh two to two oh five?
Well, it's two oh five cents increase, rate increase.
So a total of six oh six?
I think if I did the math right, that's right.
Because the proposed rate was five seventy-one.
So that doesn't make, that doesn't make any sense. What I'm trying to say is, in my motion, is I want to increase it so that it covers the audit requirements and the capital projects increases that they've discussed. And I guess, maybe we need to bring, I'll withdraw my motion. Justin, can you help answer that question? Or maybe it's Steve, whoever can answer the question. I wanted to cover those, that, what we've discussed, and nothing more. I don't want anything beyond that, whatever that rate has to be.
It, it looks to me like this, these numbers here are a little bit higher because it would cover the costs more quickly in one year, right? As opposed to moving up to the trend line, which basically spreads the cost over time, right? So the proposed increase originally was a dollar sixty-nine to meet the trend line. This here looks like two, what is it, two oh five? It would raise what is it, two oh five? It would raise the money more quickly.
So, okay. Just a clarification.
Please. So Steve, what would the five dollar seventy-one cent or the proposed increase be if the detention basin relocation was factored out?
I don't know. I'd have to recalculate.
We need some new math.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I really want to support a change in the stormwater fee.
Yeah.
But I think it's irresponsible to just pull a number out, and I think it's irresponsible to just, both options are irresponsible. So I would like to, personally, I would like to just move on with the immediate mass staff to come back with something for stormwater at a later point in time when a rate could be presented that doesn't include the detention basin.
There's no other motions, we will move to item F. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance sixteen dash three eight amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code Title One, adding a new section one dash seven dash E regarding ethical conduct for city council members and appropriate remedies for malconduct, as well as the creation of an ethics committee.
Uh, Mayor, what is the effective date on the rate increase?
Today, I guess.
Mayor, if we could ask finance, what would be reasonable?
I would think October first.
Do I need, do we need to go back and have a separate vote to make that effective October first, or can we amend and?
I think it passed, Ryan DeGale vice, it passed today, so it goes into effect at the next billing cycle, doesn't it?
At this point, you'd probably have to make a motion to suspend the rules and return them.
Yeah, but I'm asking, since it passed, it would go into effect the next billing cycle.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood the passing comment and question, so yes, you're correct.
So it goes April, uh, October first?
It's, my understanding is we have, don't we have groups of bills that go out? Does everyone go out at once? Do we have some that go out one week, different group, week two, different group, week three?
Yeah, we have groups during the month, and so I would recommend October first for a new billing cycle.
Can we get a motion to give that direction to staff, or can we just?
Unless you make the motion retroactively, make it effective to that prior date. Today's the day, oh.
So if a bill goes out tomorrow, it has a new datum, the new rate on.
Administratively, I think that might be a nightmare. So Mayor, would you entertain a motion to?
I would already moved on to the next item, for conversion of that next item. Do you want to bring it back up?
Bring it back at the end of the meeting, thank you.
Mayor, there's also one item on the fee schedule on the last page on the document research copy service that needs to be addressed.
I guess. Okay, I'll read this again. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance sixteen dash three eight amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code Title One, adding a new section one dash seven dash E regarding ethical conduct for the city council members and appropriate remedies for malconduct, as well as the creation of an ethics commission. This was my item, and everyone has, I think everyone in the council has weighed in. I would like our city attorney to read the final adjustments to the ordinance, and then we'll go to discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. The first change or amendment that we need to address is in section one dash seventy dash three, C, two, and below it, there's a number three. Strike the three and replace it with the small letter A. On the following page, there's a four, and replace it with a small b. Moving down into section F, one, the language that will be suggested in this instance will be, the city council, in order to avoid interference with the judicial process, shall not make a public statement or take any action regarding the criminal charges unless said charge elected official is found guilty in a court of law. Moving on to the next change in section one seventy dash four, section B, four, the language following make public disclosures and filings would strike in certain circumstances and replace it with, as set forth in section B, comma, above, comma, including where an elected official, and then keeping the rest of that paragraph intact. Next section would be moving to section one dash seventy dash five, section, or letter capital E, following the title, the council reserves the option to pursue other remedies, comma, including but, and then insert the word not limited to censure. With those suggested changes, I believe that reflects both the mayor and the council's intent.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. One question, David, on that, on one seventy four, section B, paragraph four, make public disclosures and filings as set forth in section B above?
Correct.
Four is part of section Bs, is it not?
What's that? I'm sorry?
Section four here, paragraph four, is part of section B.
We're referring, actually trying to tie back into the state codes that require municipal Ethics Acts, that's section ten dash three, thirteen oh one of the Utah Code.
Gotcha. So it's referring to section, not section B as a whole, but section B, the introductory paragraph there?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious as to how that played out. Thank you. That was my clarifying question. I do have two suggestions, additional edits that I'd like to throw out here. These are mine, if I may. In one dash seventy dash two, paragraph D, as in David, or Delta, depending on your phonetic alphabet preference, Ethics Acts includes all of the above and types of conduct-related ethical duties in section one dash seven three dash, one dash seventy dash three herein. However, there are some things mentioned in section four, namely section B there, which I think would also be considered violations of Ethics Acts if that kind of thing were to take place, all the adult dues and the due dues under one seventy four B. So would it be appropriate to include one seventy four referenced in that two D?
Where I would suggest we say in that last sentence, one seventy dash three and one seventy dash four herein, and that would capture both the state code and those that the city has enacted.
Right, okay. Everybody's okay with that change. And then the last one is on one seventy three, section C, paragraph two A now, was paragraph three. And in discussion with a couple of other council members over the course of the last couple of weeks, we didn't like the language, I think, based on a valid reason. I think we wanted to remove that, and just let the council determine whether or not they're going to remove some or all of this fine, based on any reason, valid or invalid, or whatever the council decides is a reason. So just striking the phrase based upon a valid reason, and the two commas surrounding it. So the, we'd read the council in an open meeting, oh, I guess one comma's still appropriate, removes some or all of this fine, et cetera. So just removing the phrase based upon valid reason. Those are the only two notes I have.
Would it be acceptable to replace the word valid and just the council in an open based upon a reason? Whereas, the concern I have is if you're gonna have an open meeting and a discussion about it, you're gonna have to have an explanation, as opposed to any valid reason.
Thank you. I would support removing it because it seems to imply that council has to make that valid reason known in an open meeting. And if there's something of a personal issue that is a severe health concern, perhaps they don't want to make that public, but this seems to imply that that valid reason has to be made known in a public meeting, and that's what I'm hoping to avoid by striking that. Including privacy work appropriate.
I guess I'll defer to the sponsor, the mayor, it's his bill, or it's his.
So I'm with me. Let's get it passed.
So let me make sure, Councilmember Jacob, you're suggesting it reads, the council comment in an open meeting removes, so we're striking all of the language based upon a valid reason, and simply indicate in an open meeting removes some or all of this fine.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to approve ordinance sixteen dash three eight in its entirety with the changes that have been suggested before and tonight.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Rolfe, second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for confirmation, as the agenda on the website has a sixteen dash thirty-eight, including a sixteen thirty-eight revised, I just want to confirm that this is the revised ordinance, not the former ordinance?
That's my understanding. We both have it published on the web and have handed it out to each council chair.
Thank you. I just want, the website has both, and they're both sixteen dash thirty-eight. So I just want to be very clear what we're passing here tonight.
Okay. The statement I made was with the changes that were made before tonight and the changes that were made at this diocese tonight, to be the motion. And that's the second you said?
Yep.
Okay. Let's vote. Oh, excuse me. Did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I did. It was just a quick nod of appreciation to staff who helped get this pulled together. This is something that's been going around for a number of years, and to finally be able to take at least this first portion and resolve it is, thank you for the work that you've done. It's very appreciated. That's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Vote passes six in favor.
Item seven G, discussion and possible action regarding the one thousand dollar city council discretionary fund. Mayor Rolfe, I added this in early two thousand fourteen. It was a thousand dollars given to council members, not to be used for any personal uses. It was so that should you decide that you wanted to make a plaque for one of the committees you were over, you didn't have to come and get a budgetary adjustment. It was at your discretion. I found out since that in prior council, it's been abused, and in current council, it's been abused, so I'd like to remove it. And, and I know for eight years, when I served on the council, there was, I believe, an eight hundred dollar discretionary fund for each council member, and I never remember ever being abused at all during those eight years. But it's come to my knowledge that it's been abused recently, and I want to remove it from that discretionary thing. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would support that. Personally, I have not found the need to use that thousand dollar amount since it's been in place. Further, going back to the days prior to this being in effect, there was just one large council contingency fund, and if there was some special project somebody wanted to do, it would be paid for out of that contingency fund. It made it a whole lot easier when the council came back with special projects, saying this is what we want to do, and staff said, okay, great, where's the money coming from? We could point to that and use it. Additionally, at the end of the budget year, when things were winding down, the council could go back to that main contingency fund and say, well, let's spend this money to take care of things that are on our wish list but weren't prioritized, such as speed tables for neighborhoods, or different, additional street lights, or things of that nature. I, so I would happily support the rescission of this because I think those funds will be better spent if lumped together as a whole. Rather than outright do it away with it, I would suggest we make an adjustment to the budget to increase the council contingency by the amount that was allocated per individual council member.
Do you make that a motion?
If there's no further comments, I move that we do what I just said.
I will second that. So I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Mayor Rolfe. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Jacob?
I'm not in support of this, mainly because every now and then there's a small item, and literally like twenty dollars, where I need to go meet a county commissioner for lunch, or whatever it might be, or, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, and it sure is convenient to just be able to turn in a receipt at the end of the day and say, this is what I used, and pull it out of my thousand dollars, please. Now, it doesn't happen fifty times in the year, so if I'm not gonna use a thousand dollars, maybe we could take it down to two hundred dollars, or three hundred dollars, or, you know, it's just an awfully convenient way to be able to do things like travel to St. George for the U L C T meeting, or whatever it might be. I think there definitely needs to be oversight of it. Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying it should be a free-for-all and knock yourself out, buy yourself whatever sounds good. But there are legitimate city business items, you know, I've used mine four times now, well, three times. And, you know, and there are legitimate things that has totaled less than a hundred dollars so far in eight months. So there's just, it's just a convenient way of being able to operate, do your city job and have expenses. It's just an easy way so you don't have to pay for them out of pocket, especially when you've been out of work for several months, and, and, you know, go through a reimbursement process and things like that. I just think it's a very convenient way. Lots of staff have city credit cards for the same kind of thing. I think it's all right under that.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. My counter would be twofold. Number one, well, really primarily one, I guess, there's still the ability for somebody to come back to council and say, here's expenditures I made, would the council be willing to reimburse me? Then as a council, we can say, sure, go for it, and reimburse your county council contingency. So it adds another step. Yes, it does detract from the convenience a little bit, but I think it would increase communication among the council, and then we would know, oh, well, so-and-so has a working relationship with somebody in another group. Perhaps that would be a good liaison to go through. I think sometimes right now, as we go out and we work with other entities, sometimes we don't have the best communication, and we don't know who's doing what. So this doesn't necessarily deny any ability for reimbursement, it just sparks the conversation. So I think that could still be addressed.
So again, it forces it to be reimbursement and paid for upfront out of your own pocket.
True.
Actually, if it's travel expenses, you can get them.
Right, right.
For travel expenses specifically, but.
And then the second thing that I had concern with, the second point was, when I first started on the council, I had no knowledge that there had been a credit card issued under my name that was being held here at the city. No clue. No one ever told me that it was out there. I got really worried when I found out somebody had a city credit card and was able to tap into city funds. So from an administrative perspective, I don't think that's necessarily included in the motion, but I absolutely do not think we should have city credit cards. I walked over to Zions Bank and found out that I could ask for a thousand dollars and get that right then. They're not doing the enforcement, so I could go back month after month after month if I wanted to and abuse what's out there. So from an administrative side, I think that's a problem. But as far as the reimbursement goes, the council as a whole, we can still authorize that. So I would obviously be in favor of the motion.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes four, oh, four to in favor.
Item seven H, discussion and possible action regarding resolution sixteen dash one four five amending the city council rules, policy amending the city council rules, policies, and procedures regarding electronic meetings. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a brief opinion of item in our council rules. The, it is literally a one paragraph change. It amends the ability for electronic meetings, which is permitted by state law, but was, what's the word, restricted by municipal, by our own choosing in the rules. We've had instances where, basically what it is up to today, the council rules state, we can have an electronic meeting for emergency if we're on official city business, or if there's something that's important in public interest that we can make a case for that we need to do it. I could always argue that it's important for a council member to participate, and therefore that's the caveat. So this is really just a word change for the public. It literally changes one paragraph to read, "The meeting will be called 'Only to accommodate council members who are traveling outside the city, if approved by a motion during an open meeting by at least four council members who are physically present at the physical location where the meeting is being held." So essentially, the whole idea is, if I'm going to be out of town and I'd like to participate electronically, I need to get at least four of you to buy off on the idea that it's worthwhile and you permitting me to be here in the meeting. And then you need to be here present in that meeting to vote on me to participate. It has, the caveat is that you need to be outside the city. It's, you can't be sitting at home on your couch just feeling like you want to watch the latest TV show and you just don't want to come to council chambers. The idea is really to have a valid reason and to be able to participate. I think it does, it's a different time and age now that we have electronics that we can communicate worldwide. I mean, what would we have done? I mean, how good would it have been to have Councilmember McConaughey participate in this fee discussion when he was in New Zealand? And we could have done that months ago, but instead we put it off just because, but we have the technology, the capability to do this, so let's do it. But an implied, an implied action, trying to word this right, by taking action tonight, there is an implication to city staff, the importance that we get the proper electronic equipment in place so that we can do this. Video would be nice, but the audio at least, I called in electronically to participate. My one absence in a regular meeting this year, I was in Washington DC. And I attempted to call in, and our phone system wouldn't accept my phone call. It was the most bizarre thing ever. And it's really unfortunate that we don't have that capability, a phone call. And we'd really like to go in that direction. So with that, I just, I'll just go right into it. I know the meeting's long. There may be some discussion, there may be some questions, but I would move that we approve Resolution 16-145.
Second.
No, a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Burton.
I agree that if they are going to be logging, it would be better to have video than just audio. Consider them must, but my bigger concern is, I don't want to make it so that we don't need to think or plan our schedules. Just think, well, I can be out of town, doesn't matter, I can be electronically. Because I live in person, it's much more productive and effective and go on communication both ways. So I don't want, I don't want to give the idea, I think it doesn't matter if you do it anyway. I think we should make sure we want our presence to be in person.
I can tell you, for one who has done this from the road, it's not convenient, and it's not a pleasant experience. It's very difficult to keep your attention, and therefore you want to use this sparingly. I mean, just do it in those cases, like, I'll plan every year and perhaps miss a meeting or two because of family vacation. There's nothing you can do around that. But sometimes you might have a business meeting that takes you out of town, like, the one I missed in DC was not planned. It was a short term. I mean, it was, they said literally, "Next week, you're going to DC." And that's what we did. But I just tell you, it's not a pleasant experience. So number one, we need to improve our capability as a city. And number two, everyone should just know that it's not a convenient experience. And so you just want to use it when it's really absolutely necessary.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things to add on to that. Most of the technology we already have, so somebody watching can see what's being shared on the overhead right here. And they should be able to dial in and listen to the conversation and participate that way. I've been able to do that in the past, though I try to avoid doing it because it is very difficult for the mayor when he's conducting the meeting to know when you on the line have a comment to make because he's not able to see you. The other problems that we have, I thought it was for Councilmember Nichols' comments about making sure we have the equipment necessary to support the technology. Two primary things we need to fix right now are the city recorder's microphone cannot be heard when you are able to dial in to make that connection, and same thing with the microphone at the podium. We've asked a couple of times over the last few years if we could get those fixed, and it kind of stalls and flounders a bit because the response is, "Well, it's gonna be a few hundred dollars to fix that, but we still need to overhaul the audio as a whole to bring it up to speed." And then we go back and forth and say, "Okay, do we spend $500, or do we spend $20,000?" And then it just dies and nothing gets fixed. I think we've been playing with this for so long that we need to just fix both of these microphones, and then perhaps at council retreat, we talk about additional changes, but at least making those two fixes. The other thing along with this is if we were to use that electronic meeting capability on a regular basis, kind of like we're doing tonight, I have the ability to share my screens to show other folks what I had been thinking, what I had been working on. We have the ability to click a button and then record that, and along with the audio, that becomes available online. So on the YouTube channel, residents can see what's being presented on the overhead because, as we talked about with the rate structure, or when we had the rate conversation, much of what's seen in this meeting does make it to the public. It's shown here for the first time. Granted, our recorders try and do as much as they can to get that into meeting minutes, but it's not a, it's not a whole record. This has become quite long-winded, but I very much support the motion and would like to move forward with the technological improvements necessary as quick as reasonably possible.
And I'm willing to support the motion as well, as long as the, at least the audio and phone system be fixed because it's very disruptive to the meeting the way it currently is. So I'll be supporting the motion, but we're gonna have to have it fixed. Our city attorney had a comment.
I didn't know if you wanted some background information in doing the research to determine what is the appropriate number and ways of allowing this type of electronic meeting to take place. We found all kinds of different variations. For example, the state school board livestreams all of their meetings. And it doesn't matter if you cannot attend, they still allow participation from their members by calling in, participating. I found one city, very close to this city, that has a seven, five-person council, and all they need is one individual in the city. The remaining four can call in or have some kind of electronic. So I think West Jordan's taking a pretty significant stand by identifying at least four being in. So I wanted to share that information with you.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes 6-0 in favor.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure the way to word this. I'll throw this out, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. I move that we make the approved changes to be solid waste fee effective as of October 1st, 2016. Yes.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Burton.
Again, I like to back my earlier discussion. For budget purposes, I would rather see this moved to January 1st, 2017.
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Mayor Rolfe?
No.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes 4-2 in favor.
Mayor?
Yes.
A staff reviewed its notes in on the stormwater. The 571 did not include relocation of the detention pond.
You didn't want, I, sorry.
No, the 551, the increase for stormwater did not include relocation of that pond for $1,600.
Okay. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Because I do not have a $1,000 slash fund, I'm looking for the council to go approve some money for the November 5th breakfast before we do our tree plantings that I could have permission for. Is intended just that, be reimbursed?
Please. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know that we can vote on that since it's not agendized, but I think you could ask if there would be any objection to submitting for reimbursement?
I'm looking for permission to get reimbursed for expenses for the breakfast on November 5th when we're doing our volunteer tree planting. Do I need to send an agenda in for that? Thank you.
Or you can put it agendized, and we do have council contingency, and we can use it from there, so put it on the agenda. Councilmember Jacob?
Two questions. One, do we still have a coun, I've misunderstood the conversation we just had about the credit cards and the $1,000 fund. I thought that replaced the council contingency.
No, there's $25,000 in council contingency now. With the motion, we added the $7,000 to that, which would make it $32,000 annually in the council contingency.
Okay, that wasn't clear to me. I thought it was, I thought the $1,000 replaced the council contingency.
No. The motion, and I should probably clarify this for whoever comes back to do the minutes, was to do away with the $1,000 council, $1,000 council member contingency fund and roll that into the regular council contingency fund.
Okay. It wasn't really in the motion that I was confused. It was in the discussion prior when you said, we were, nevermind. The other thing is, I believe Mr. Piper mentioned that we need to address another item on the fee schedule before we move to closed session, and that was the document research copy. Is that the one? That can't be the one. Is that the one?
That's correct. It's on the last page. It's, Melanie proposed that change just to be in compliance with the state law.
And that's the document copies are 25 cents a page, and, oh, is it just throws in the UCA into the? Can you tell me exactly which part of that we're talking about?
It's the one that says, "Document research, copy and service, grammar request, and Utah Code annotated 63G-2-203 fees."
Okay.
About a third of the way down the page, on the last page.
It doesn't set a fee then? It just?
It does not. It just says state statute.
It just references state code and that's all?
Exactly.
And we need to approve that part of the fee schedule for that to be in effect, right?
Exactly.
Okay. One other question on that, though. I mean, are there any other changes in that whole section as far as $5 per document, $10 per CD, 25 cents a page? Is that all the same?
It's all the same.
Okay. In that case, I move to approve the recorder fee schedule on the last page of the uniform fee schedule in the packet.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Rice. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Burton?
So if we do not approve this, it just stays where it is right now. Is that correct?
Right.
So it's not, it was a way in to stay where it is?
That's correct.
And what is it right now?
It's just adding in some language. It's not changing any fees.
Yes, we did not.
It's just adding some language into the code. It's not changing the fees.
It's not changing the fee now.
Right. Okay.
Let's vote.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Vote passes 6-0 in favor.
A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Clarification, Mayor.
This session.
Is it a motion to adjourn or a motion to move to closed session?
Closed session has been called because of issues that come up today, so.
I will happily move to adjourn.
A motion by Councilmember McConaughey?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion, there's none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes it. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor, and my apologies. For not using the table there, we were leaving the fee schedule and going on.
Yeah, I just don't like to, I like to.
Thank you.